Good evening to all. I'm going to get started with our script as people come in. It is March 25th, 2021. This open meeting of the Arlington School Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with deliberation of the meeting, ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Arlington School Committee is convening by Zoom as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note the meeting is being recorded. Some attendees are participating via video conference. Please be aware that others may be able to see you. Take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available in the Novus Agenda Dashboard. We recommend members of the public follow the agenda as posted in Novus, unless I note otherwise, I will introduce each speaker. For any response, please wait until the floor is yielded to you. Every vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. I think that we have a lot of got a lot of people here with us already, which is great. I'm going to go ahead and check the people who I know are always here, and then we'll go from there. So Ms. Exton here. Dr. Carden. Dr. Allison Ampe. Dr. Allison Ampe is not going to be here this evening. Mr. Thielman. Waiting for him. Mr. Schlickman.
Good evening.
Mr. Hayner. Okay, Dr. Bodie.
I'm here.
Dr. McNeil.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
Elmer.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
Ms. Keys.
Hello.
I see Mr. Thielman. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and get started. As always, our agendas are are long and we have lots of things to do. So the first item on the agenda is public comment this evening, but nobody signed up in advance for public comment. So we will go ahead and move to the next item on the agenda, which is the Safe Roots to School Report. This is something that was brought to us by Mr. Schlickman after attending a Transportation Advisory Committee meeting. And so we are excited to welcome Ms. Ms. Crocker here this evening to talk to us about Safe Roots to School. So Ms. Crocker, can you hear me okay?
Oh, perfectly. Thank you. Good evening.
Good. Welcome. We're glad that you're here. So you can go ahead and you can go ahead and get started.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm just going to share my screen, so please bear with me. Share. All right, can everyone see my screen?
It looks great. Thank you.
Okay, terrific. All right, we're in business. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Judy Crocker. I am the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Safe Roots to School Outreach Coordinator that serves Arlington. So tonight, we're just going to give an overview of the program and maybe some next steps about what we'd like to see the program do in Arlington. So MassDOT Safe Roots to School Program is a free federally funded public K through 8 program. And we work to increase safety for walking and biking by using a collaborative community-centered approach that bridges the gap between health and transportation. The program originated in Denmark. It's in about 35, 45 countries. It's in all 50 states. The parent company or organization, I should say, is Department of Transportation. Thus, we are MassDOT here in Massachusetts. MassDOT participates in about 65% of Massachusetts communities. At the end of the day, it's all about safety. Everyone here, we just want the kiddos to be safe. So no matter what transportation mode the students use, we just want safety is the bottom line. So Safe Roots is not a one-size-fits-all program. Every school has its own challenges and successes, and we have a very large toolbox. And what we try to do is customize what your needs are and how we can best benefit your students based on our programming. And these are some of the ways that people use our program. So Safe Roots has a public health foundation based on what is commonly known as the six E's, which are listed here. I'm going to review these very briefly tonight. Oftentimes, though, it is kind of the chicken and the egg. I think so many, so many times, all of us have heard parents say, you know, I don't want my child walking to school because there's too much traffic and the car goes fast and yeah, yeah, yeah. And then what do they do? They get in the car and they're part of the traffic. So, you know, we try to break those cycles of behavior. We are also not a stay in your lane program. So as much as we work with schools, we equally work with municipalities and the community at large. So let's dig right in. So when we talk about evaluation, we have various ways of making different walk shed and bike shed maps here in the office. And we use those maps to actually develop what we call a route map. The safest, what we think between where the students live and how to get to school, we actually make out routes. We use those route maps for a couple of different purposes. One of them is called park and walk locations. We are trying to lessen parent traffic in and around a school campus. So we suggest different satellite areas around the community, the neighborhoods around that school. And we're all counting our steps these days. So it's just one way of parents to park maybe collectively and then walk the kiddos to school. The other way we use these route maps is we create what we call walking school buses or bike trains. So many of us growing up, we walked to school, picked up a friend, went to another house, picked up another friend. Today, they give everything a name. It's called a walking school bus. The same for bikes would be a bike train. So what we can do on these route maps is that we can actually identify different meeting spots with approximate at times. We actually have a stencil kit that's available. You can mark it on the sidewalk or side of the road. And that just helps, you know, kind of the group mentality. It's always more fun with a friend. And then particularly this year, with given current events, we have many different ways to celebrate how the students are getting to school, whether they are at home or they are, you know, in person learning this year. Basically, there's so much screen time, we're trying to get everyone to move. So we do applaud Arlington on your school website. You do have your maps of each of the individual schools. They usually list major intersections, the sidewalks, crosswalks, that type of thing. So they're not so much route maps, it's just neighborhood maps. Engineering. So we do some engineering in the office. And, you know, full disclosure, you know, principals didn't go to school and get all their degrees to be a traffic engineer. And quite honestly, we do what we call soft engineering in our office, which is working on best practices. And what we typically do, two different avenues. We do arrival dismissal observation. So that would be, for example, in the upper left corner. We're looking at the school property itself and how it's managed. How do you use your front door? Do you separate modes of traffic? What type of signage do you use? Things like that. Then, from there, we can, you know, school day is really home to school. So you have to walk through the neighborhood, and that's the lower left picture. So if the red circles where the school is, you have to transverse the neighborhood in order to get there. That's what we call a walk audit. So we're looking at the infrastructure, you know, the sideways sidewalks covered with vegetation. What do the crosswalks look like, conditions in general? And this is, you know, so we deal with the minute, we deal with the school properties much as municipal property. Another avenue that we've done, and this is something that we've been doing this year at the Dale and the Thompson Schools, is that we can actually do some arrival dismissal planning or circulation planning. You know, if you speak to principals, so many people say that, you know, I wish people would just follow the rules. So sometimes when you ask, so what are your rules? They tend to be car-centric. That's why we tried to call this arrival dismissal and not drop off and pickup. And also, where do you find it? Are they on your website? Are they in your handbook? Are they just in principal newsletters, et cetera? So that's usually we do the for planning a two-page document, and that's in the lower right. For an example, we tried to include a map on one side, which just separates the modes of transportation and tells people where they should go. And this is an example of the text, which would be the reverse side. So this is translatable. Again, we tried to include all forms of transportation. Some folks like to put their bell schedule on there just to really, you know, drive that home for the parents. Next, we have education. We focus on pedestrian and bicycle safety. For pedestrian safety, it is skills-based, so it is DESI-approved. We focus on grades two, three. However, we can elevate the program to grades K through eight. For example, with the Meramec gas explosions, we were doing everybody. So we also offer professional development for both of these curriculums. And particularly for the bike safety, we often will ask parents to help us. So we have each have a smaller group. We can do peer-to-peer learning. For example, in neighboring Winchester, the middle school student council helps out with the neighboring elementary school, et cetera. So this is a 30-minute outdoor lesson on school property. Then we have bike safety. So bike safety, we do not have a bike for every child, so it is not skills-based. So DESI does call this enrichment. This is usually assembly style. It's 30 to 45 minutes. We deal with personal safety, bike safety, and rules of the road. It tends to be to for the older grades, usually grades four, five, and then middle school. And again, depending on the age, it's depending exactly what we might have included. We, for this, we do have videos online. We have written curriculum materials, as we do for pedestrian safety. And we also have virtual learning options. I have one colleague, she's done many times, it looks like a Brady Bunch of everyone trying on their helmet. And we do helmet fits online. So again, just trying to get everyone moving and be flexible in our programming. Another big aspect of our education is for the parents. We do try to educate parents, they are not in traffic, they are the traffic. So in many neighborhoods, we see the, you know, the green men or signage, you know, please slow down, you know, my child lives here. And how often do we have students that are getting off in the roadways? We have parents parking on both sides of the road in both directions, using the middle of the road to load and unload, parking in fire lanes. So these are all pictures actually that I took during my observations at the Dale and Thompson Schools this year. So for the parents, we have two different flyers. One discusses school zone driving, and the other is arrival dismissal. These are both available in 10 languages. So we come to encouragement. Encouragement is the fun part. That's where we celebrate how we get to school. Most Arlington schools do participate in two out of our three flagship events. We have one in October for International Walk Day. Upcoming in May is Massachusetts Walk to School Day, and in February, we have a winter walk. We have a whole library of no-cost, low-cost themes to try to make this even more fun. Pictured here is Crazy Sock Day. Doesn't get more basic than that. And we do have a lot of forms of communication to try to encourage, you know, behavior change does take baby steps to get there. So if principals need help with language, we can help with that for newsletters and such. And we do recommend forming some type of task force, just so Safe Roots has someplace to live. It could be a PTO subcommittee. It could be town-wide, school-wide. You know, in some communities, it's the Y. Some communities, it's the police station, et cetera. In March, we actually have a lot going on for the public. And we just closed our crossing guard appreciation nominations, but we have extended our lawn sign contest. I think a lot of people have things going on with the new DESI directives. So we pushed this up to just before April vacation. And the theme this year is be seen. And engagement. Engagement formerly known as enforcement. Again, we have a lot of training for crossing guards. Officer Ratu is on this. He's very well versed in this material. We do a lot of communication. Pictured here is actually a bike assembly. It's from a neighboring community where the police and the school nurse called me in. They were having issues and a couple intersections with the kiddos. And so I invited the police to come in and speak for a few minutes. I mean, it's their backyard type thing, so. What the merrier. So equity is the last E. And in most cultures, this is our overarching umbrella that transfers all our E's. We have actually been fortunate enough to partner with the MASC, and we've created wellness policies, wellness amendments, I should say, for that policy. Every school has a wellness, a wellness policy. So we, on our website, we have some examples to use to add active transportation to your policies. We offer things in multiple languages, and we do include students of all abilities. But the the icons that I have here, the diagram, is actually, you know, any, most communities have multiple elementary schools and then to middle to high school. So it's nice if you have uniform communication and expectations across the way, whether it be for circulation plans or even safe for pedestrian safety instruction. It's, it's one thing if one or two schools volunteer and they raise their hands to do it, but it's just nicer to have it, the curriculum embedded so that it's offered for every student. We do have a COVID document that we came out with last summer, and this has been extremely popular. Again, trying to, you know, there's so much going on. We fully understand what one more thing, but the kiddo still have to get to school. So trying just to streamline the process a little bit for many communities. So here we are with Arlington. So Arlington was one of the top, the first three pilot programs for Safe Roots to School Program in the U.S. to the federal DOT program. Again, most schools participate in our fall and spring walk to school event. You guys have great use of your crossing guards and really good infrastructure. You complete streets policy. In the lower right picture, that is from the ripping, cutting from the Dale and Infrastructure Grant that was received. And I think that's even Jay Kaufman in the picture in the left. And I think they've already started on the grant that you guys received for the Stratton School in 2019. So these are almost under 2 million, but, you know, considerable grants collectively. And again, we've done arrival dismissal reports and circulation planning for the Dale and the Thompson School this calendar year, or the school year. So my appreciation to Dr. Brody, who has helped me work with the planning department. I've worked with Daniel Amstutz. And he has, he reached out to Safe Roots because they were trying to, for a sustainability program, trying to work on a, like a ped bike master plan. They were interested in how many students actually walked and biked to school. So with Dr. Brody's permission, we did our parent travel survey for all schools. And this is what you have listed here. Unfortunately, we started this the second week of March a year ago. And so we did extend the survey period into April, but I think overall, we had less participation than we would have from Arlington on a regular day. So I do want to give a shout out to the Hardy School because they still pulled off, you know, more than 25%. So as you can see from this, an average was about 52% of Arlington students do walk and bike to school. But we still, and more students tend to walk in the morning, and more people tend to use the cars and the, for afternoon pickup, probably all those after-school activities. So looking at the arrival dismissal reports that I just did, the Dale and I did in, I want to say, November, October, November, so it was really nice weather. And the Thompson was December, January, so let's just say it was chilly and then snowy. We had averaged every day AM and PM of 600 to 131 cars. So it's still disconcerting because you have one-third of your school population in school approximately, and you still have that many cars. So a lot going on. So what we suggest for next steps, so we would love to work with Arlington to make your program more sustainable. We actually have sustainability document, which I can forward to you after this meeting. And on this, we like to focus on the schools itself, break it out to the district, break it out to the municipality, and then any statewide help that we can get. The first thing we'd like to do is form a Safe Roots Task Force. Again, a year ago, January, I tried this, and we had a few people from municipal side, a few people from some schools, but it wasn't the robust Arlington drive that I was really hoping for. And then current events. So hoping to jumpstart this again, trying to, did not put my foot on the gas on this one this year, given everything else going on. But for example, because I've been working at the Dale and the Thompson, both of the principals are very excited to get this going. We do recommend professional development for our pedestrian and bike curriculum. It is being performed at some schools, and then even speaking to some principals, you know, oh, I think we used to do that type of thing. So just to make this a regular event. It's almost like civics. It's bringing back that everyday education. We also look into the school committee, suggest that you adopt the wellness policy amendments. Again, just to put active transportation into your, what you do. And, and even, you know, and then looking forward, I think we all want to give a jump start to what next fall is going to look like. And we have time working with the principals and the PTOs to really try to get people. I think everyone's coming at the fall with eyes wide open. So it's a great opportunity to really start a back-to-school campaign of walking and biking. So in closing, I always like to bring it back to the kiddos. We just try to, again, want everyone to be safe, want everyone to be happy, but we'd love to get everyone out walking and biking. Any questions? I spoke fast because I was told I only have 15 minutes.
You did very well. Thank you so much. So questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Schickman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to point out that Dale and was one of the very, very first Safe Roots to School projects that the state did. We piloted this thing. And I think that's why it's got to be like 15 years later, we're coming back to the same place. And the reason why I was interested in bringing some discussion of this back is that Ms. Crocker was appearing before the, before the TAC, the Transportation Advisory Committee, talking about traffic pattern and routing. And I thought it was important that, that we know what is happening out there as well and that we can support safe travel to school through, through this program. So thank you for coming by, and please keep us in touch as suggestions you put on the table for changing traffic patterns around our schools. Because I know that if that happens, parents are going to be talking to us about it. Thanks.
Thank you for attending so that I can attend this, so.
Anybody else? Mr. Hayner?
I just want to say that I think educating children in the safety of transportation will increase their awareness. So as they become adults, it'll become a lot easier to make sure cars are appropriately coming to school and not stopping in the middle and causing potential hazards. So thank you again for all the work you've done, and hopefully we'll be able to continue it here in town.
Thank you.
Great. Anybody else? Dr. Bodie?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Crocker. You had some great suggestions here. We'll follow up. And I know that this is one of the things that is very attractive, Arlington as a community, that it is, is a district where students pretty much walk to school. And I can tell you then, the new school, the new high school, we're actually putting in more bike racks to encourage that. I will add to that comment, though, that I, I hope that drivers in Arlington are careful. I just was driving today and I saw something that was, you know, not safe if a child had been on a bike. So I think that's something that we all need to be conscious of, that as we encourage more biking, that puts more responsibility on the adults. We did have a safe bike curriculum, and let me look into that. I think that certainly what happened last March and this year has sort of put that to the side. But I think that's something we need to bring back next year. So thank you very much, and thank you for your partnership with us.
Thank you. And if I could be so bold, congratulations on your new chapters ahead of you, I understand, so.
Thank you.
Great. So if you could send us the materials that you talked about, especially any language around wellness policy amendments, and we can get that to the right place, that would be great. So thank you so much.
Thank you, and all thank you so much for the opportunity, and happy spring.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is listed as an update from the AEA. And I think I will leave it at that as I turn it over to Ms. Keys.
Thank you. This is a super happy update, so I'm really happy to share this with all of you. Many of you know Susan Suarez. She has been a paraprofessional teaching assistant at the Stratton School for over a decade now. And she was one of the leaders in forming the Paraprofessionals Union here in Arlington a few years ago, when Jason Levy was the AEA president. And in recognition for the work that she has done at the school and in organizing and elevating the role of our paraprofessionals here in town, she has been recognized as MTA's Education Support Professional of the Year. She's the one in the state and who's getting this honor. So we are so proud of Susan. We are all better for the work that she did here. Our paraprofessionals are pulled from their roles, much less often to be covering. So they're able to serve students in the roles that they've been hired to do. She has worked to get, we have consistent job descriptions. We got a pay raise for our powers. So we're able to attract more people and keep more people. It's still not where we all want it to be, but we're going to keep working on that as time goes on. And really, like, this year, we've seen how important these paraprofessionals are to our schools and to keeping them going. And we have some great talent here because of Susan's work. So I just wanted to make sure the whole community knows that Susan has been honored by the MTA and given this award. We went to Stratton School and took some pictures this morning, so the news story is going out there. She's going to be working with other communities around the state to help them elevate the role of their powers, just like we've done here in Arlington. And I just wanted to introduce you all to her and let you, let her say hello. She says she's much more comfortable working behind the scenes, so I'm not going to call on her to like make a speech. But I wanted to make sure that the school committee and our administration and everybody got to recognize Susan for her great achievement.
Thank you so much, Ms. Keys.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Ms. Suarez. Dr. Bodie, did you want to add anything?
I would. I thank you for that introduction, and I want to, my heartfelt congratulations. I cannot think of a, somebody who supports education who deserves this honor more. So Susan, thank you so much. And, and all of the students who have benefited from your, your support. I know where, if they were here tonight, they would be also cheering you on. You certainly have given so much to Arlington. And truly, without your leadership, And truly, without your leadership, we would not be where we are today with our contract for our paraprofessionals, which they have so richly deserved over the years. So thank you so much, and I hope there's another decade that you'll be with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bodie. Thank you very much. It's my pleasure.
Great, thank you, Dr. Bodie. Anybody else on this one? I can certainly speak on behalf of the school committee that we are so honored to have you here with us this evening to share in a small part of this award with you. And I'm so glad that you're being so richly celebrated across all areas of your professional life. I'm sure that your family must be so, so proud of you. And I know that your Stratton family and your Arlington family are as well. So on behalf of the school committee, we are so glad that you came tonight. We're grateful that Ms. Keys brought this here to us. And we wish you many, many congratulations and look forward to what's to come for you. So congratulations. Thank you so much. All right. So the next item on the agenda is an update on the travel policy and quarantine protocols from Dr. Bodie.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Well, the, the, the travel protocols have been disseminated to everyone. So I don't know if you really want me to go through each part of that. But I will tell everyone that what motivated this change was multi-pronged. One, we are certainly, as you know, we're going to talk more about this this evening. Our students are coming back full-time in person. And, you know, when we look at our, what had been our policy prior to this, that one of the outcomes when students were, came back from travel and they had to remain at home for the 10 days, and later it was five days test and be back on day eight. But even with that, the number of days that you'd be out of school were considerably less than they would be when we return full-time. That's one, one of the issues. But also, other issues is that the governor changed the regulations on travel. It changed from a order to a advisory. But even before that happened, which was a surprise to us on Friday, we had already begun looking at the policy primarily for the reason that I just gave, is that what the, what the impact would be. And we also known from our surveillance pool testing program that the, the incidence of positive cases in our, our schools was very low. So that contributed also to a change in the policy. And in general, our, our number of cases, whether identified from an outside testing company, was also very low. So the conditions in which we could relax some of these restrictions just made sense. And I will, I will give a lot of credit to our nurses, who were certainly unanimously behind having some kind of less restrictive policy. Now, one of the things actually we talked about yesterday in the policy subcommittee meeting was whether pool testing would be something that we would really strongly encourage our, our families that travel out of Massachusetts to consent to be part of. And I think that that is something that we certainly can add to this, this protocol that we have. And it certainly is something that we encourage our families. I know our principals are encouraging families to participate. And this is something that we will have been doing as a district as well. Right now, our participation rate is, is, is 87% on average from K to the eighth grade. Our high school right now is in the process of developing a protocol. And as you're, as you are aware, our athletes have a mandatory testing requirement, which is something that we can put in place for our students. So I'm happy to answer any questions about this. I know another part of this agenda item is talking about quarantine protocols. But maybe before we get into that part of this agenda topic, we can talk a little bit more, see if there's any questions or concerns about the travel protocol.
Great, that sounds good. This, I put this on the agenda, lots can change in two weeks. So when we were here two weeks ago, we were in a different place, and there were some questions and, and, you know, from the, from the committee about where we were at at that point. And then policy met on Monday, and the governor changed his mind the Friday before. And so anyway, here we are, and it's just different than it was two weeks ago. So, but I don't like, don't like pulling things off the agenda that I say that we're going to talk about. So here we are. So questions from the committee around, so Dr. Bodie, and also just to specify, you sort of got into the, the pool testing piece here. So I know that that's something that I have a couple of questions about. So I think let's talk about travel, and then let's talk about pool, like student pool testing, and then quarantine policy, protocols, if that's all right with you. So questions from the committee about the travel policy as it is now. Mr. Schickman?
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank the superintendent for bringing up the pool testing with regard to the travel. Because if we are going to be successfully opening our schools and keeping everybody safe, the pool testing program is an essential part of it. So I asked that it be included in the travel documents. And I once again reiterate that people who are traveling out of state should be also be participating in the pool testing program, and that we should have that in bold letters on this document. And basically, anything else we're sending out to people with regards to having students attending school once we go to a full reopening.
All right, anybody else? So I did, when, so talking about pool testing, because it came up here, I did put in the, in Novus, a couple of policies, one from Watertown and one for Somerville. Not necessarily advocating that this is the way to go from in Arlington, but I thought it was important for the committee to see that there are, we do have some neighboring districts who are moving towards a mandatory pool testing program for students. I think, you know, there, we currently are in an opt-in situation. There could also be an opt-out situation. But I would, you know, at some point, not necessarily tonight, because we're not prepared for it, but would like to have a conversation about what that, what student testing looks like in Arlington moving forward. There's no reason to believe that we're going to see a vaccine for kids 11 and under this calendar year. So this is not just a this school year thing. This is going to be a next school year thing as well, especially and particularly in our elementary schools. So I think a lot of what we do now will be how we carry on. And I am, I, you know, I like 87%. I think that that's really good. I like 95% or 98% participation better. And I also recognize that the 87% is not consistent across all schools, right? So if we average 87, there are some that are, are, you know, quite, not quite a bit, but lower than that. And then there are some that are higher than that, right? That's how averages work. So I want to make sure that as we move towards April 5th for our elementary schools, and then after April vacation for our sixth through eighth graders, that we're really thinking about what, how we want to talk about pool testing, how we want to prioritize it in communication from principals, and how we can drive that participation rate up. Because it just seems to me to be such a critical piece of how we keep this as safe as possible, you know, as we finish out this school year and as we think about next year. So I wanted to bring that up. I'm not sure if it's something that we, the committee wants to have a conversation about here in two weeks' time, if we want to talk about it in a subcommittee. So I did want to bring it up and see what people had to say about that this evening. Mr. Hayner, and then Ms. Exton.
I think it's important for this conversation began to happen. But I also think there's a lot of information that we don't have at this point with regard to mandatory testing of students and potentially staff and things of that nature. So in the interim, I think we need to find this information out. I'm talking about the idea of mandating testing. And then the question comes up, if a child shows positive, responsibility of the school as far as providing education while the child is quarantined or being dealt with with regard to that. These are questions that need answering.
Ms. Exton, and then Mr. Schickman?
I would just echo Ms. Morgan's comments about, around looking into it further. I've also, I'm not seeing it here in Novus tonight, but I've seen the Somerville and the Watertown policies. I would add Martha's Vineyard also has a mandatory testing policy. And, and I think as we're bringing more and more students back, we, we need to continue to have that conversation to make sure that we're keeping all of our students safe and our teachers. Not every single teacher can be vaccinated, and so we need to be, continue to be vigilant for the adults in the building as well. Thanks.
Mr. Schickman?
Yes, thank you. We talked about whether this should be an advisory or you're mandated. The question is, do we have the authority to mandate participation in the pool testing program? And if we are, I would strongly support making it a mandate. So I think that if the chair who has the access to our attorney can inquire as to whether that's permissible to mandate participation in pool testing, I think that would make, make our decision a lot easier going forward.
Dr. Bodie, and then Mr. Thielman?
I refer Mr. Thielman if he would like to speak first.
Okay, I some, you know, my, my question is, I thought we've been getting reports that participation in pool testing has been pretty good. I mean, are we concerned that we're not going to have people participate in pool testing, and that's why we have to go to something that's mandatory?
I, I'm not concerned, but I think that, if I could, I would say our participation increases all the time.
Yeah.
So I think that's very good. There are two, there are two parts to this question, whether you can legally mandate pool testing. There is the mandate of the pool testing itself, which that is, is an issue and which I actually plan to talk to town council about. But the second part is this. When we have a positive vial, our next step in our protocol is that we have students and staff, anybody that was represented in that positive vial, have a binex now test, which is a diagnostic test. And if in the case, which has only happened really twice, where the binex now was not diagnostic, then we've gone to a PCR, which is definitely another diagnostic test. And we've been able to determine the positivity. I'm not sure, but this is something we can look into, whether the diagnostic test is something that a school committee can mandate. So I mean, these are questions that I'm, I'm happy to research and will. But if we can't follow through our protocol, then it's going to be difficult to actually identify when we potentially would have a positive case. So right now, fortunately, our incidence is very low, and I echo what Ms. Exton said. We want to make sure that we have the safest working and learning environment that we possibly can. And while many, many of our teachers will be vaccinated by the time we, we, we open full-time on April 5th, now everyone will be. So we will certainly going to maintain all of the safety protocols we currently have in place. But I do think there's some legal questions around this that need to be explored a little bit more before we can talk about this further about mandating.
Great. Just in, so one thing in the interim, Dr. Bodie, if, I think it would go a long way if you could really work with your, your principal teams. I know that the signups and the, this has been largely delegated to the principals, as is appropriate at each school. But, you know, really work with them over the next week or so to really, let's really push this. Let's, you know, get it out even, you know, let's really over-communicate about this. Really big press to do this and see, because, you know, I, I, you know, having, having looked at the participation, you know, and to answer Mr. Thielman's question a little bit, you know, it, it, it varies by school a little bit, right? So I mean, if, if there's, you know, where we see very, very high participation, 98%, right? It's like, no, there's, there's, there are no concerns, right? But if we're in the 70s or 80s, you know, I personally, you know, it, it, it would be nice to drive those numbers up. And if we can do it in an opt-in, you know, encourage people to participate, make it really easy to sign up. If I, you know, we have no staffing capability to handle this at all. But if we have anybody, you know, anybody who can, can work on this and, and try and drive those numbers up. You know, the librarians at my kids' school are extraordinary at sending me notifications about my kids' late library books. But if we can, we got to, you know, just really push that testing just over the next week or so, when people are really paying attention. I think we could get to a place where we're testing so many kids that we don't need to explore other options. But I hope that that's something that you can work on with your team, Dr. Bodie, just over the next week or so, and, and see where we're at as we explore what our other choices are. So I sum Ms. Exton's hand. So Ms. Exton, go ahead.
Just in addition to a response to Mr. Thielman, the other piece that I think about in increasing the participation rate is that we're about to double the density of all of the classrooms and reduce the distance between students. And I think it's going to be really, really important to really carefully surveil has this affected the transmission of the virus? Or are our schools, you know, still all the other mitigation tools that are in effect, you know, the masking, the ventilation, going outside as much as possible? Are those things enough? And I just, the more that we participate, the more people who participate in the testing, the better information we have about what's happening inside the schools as we bring all of the students back fully in person.
Mr. Thielman, and then?
Yeah, I just want to say, I agree that the more people we test, the better. I'm not trying to say we not test, that's saying I'm concerned about. I'd be curious to hear what town council says about a mandate. And anytime you go down the path of a mandate, you do invite some opposition. So I, I think the way we're doing it now, we're, we're, we're trying to, we're persuading people, and we're advocating for it, and we're telling people it's in everyone's best interest, and it's to everyone's benefit, seems like the right way to go. But so that's the only point I want to make, is that a mandate is a tricky thing, but I'm interested in hearing what an attorney says.
Dr. Bodie?
Just one last comment for parents who may be listening this evening. I know there was some concern perhaps of taking away from time and learning. But I have to say, this has become, we've become so efficient at this. In elementary classroom, it takes five minutes. Yes, we're going to double the numbers. But the, the nurses and principals said they don't expect this to really change very much because the children self-administer the swamps. And we have our middle school principals and assistant principals here tonight. And I know that they can talk about how efficient it is in the middle schools as well. So we're finding that, you know, there is no, this minimal, minimal impact on learning time with our program.
Great. So I think what I'll plan to do is have this on the agenda in two weeks' time. Great. So I think what I'll plan to do is have this on the agenda in two weeks' time. You can let your team know that, you know, this is something that we're, um, you know, that we're looking at and we're, um, you know, really want to see encouragement of people to sign up over the next week or so. Um, so we can, you know, get to a place where, um, we're seeing, you know, higher, let's just say higher than 80, I mean, 87% is great, but sort of an average participation rate of, of above 87% and see if we can drive that up. Um, but you know, also concurrently explore what options we have. You know, if, if there comes a time where we don't feel that that's sufficient and just, you know, I think it's, it's important to understand what our, what our options are. So. Um, all right, any, uh, so Dr. Bodie, do you want to talk about quarantine protocols as well, sort of secondarily?
Um, nothing really is changing uh as we move into full-time in-person instruction than what has been in place all year. When we have a positive case in a classroom, as you all know, uh, some of you've experienced this, that the, that cohort, that is considered a cohort, the classroom, and they will be, um, learning from home for 10 days. Uh, some of you've also experienced learning communities where that becomes positive case impacts the learning community. None of that is going to change in terms of how we are going to operate with respect to a positive case. I think that probably, my guess is one of the things you're wondering about is, you know, how this is going to work with lunches as we go forward. And, uh, the middle schools have been very successful in how they have organized lunches to make sure that we, we are very careful about having cohorts, learning communities, having lunch together. And in the planning for the elementary schools, again, the same idea that we're going to have a coordinating of classrooms as, as, uh, as much as possible, even if we have to have two grades in the, in the cafeteria, uh, rainy day, there's, there's going to be full awareness that we're not trying to have, for example, students from a couple of different fifth grade classes eating a different, you know, mixed together in the cafeteria because, um, because of that. Having said that, that, uh, having talked with the, our director of health department and that, that when students are in a cafeteria environment for the short amount of time that they are spaced six feet apart, that the impact for identifying a much larger cohort really is not there. So while we're also trying to manage this, there's also not the concern that in the time period that they would be there having lunch six feet apart, that we would identify, um, any other students other than the existing cohort classrooms that they're in. So I do want to reassure people that just because we're coming back full-time in person does not mean we're changing how we are, um, uh, addressing positive cases.
Great. Any questions for Dr. Bodie on the quarantine protocols? Okay, um, so return to school, full return to school planning. Dr. Bodie. And then we, there was a motion for this that was sent out earlier as well. So we want to make sure that we take care of that, but let's, let's get the update first.
Well, I will talk about elementary and the high school later, but we have our, um, our principal Maringer and Principal Pierre Maxwell here today as well as our assistant principals who will get, you know, introduced, uh, when they speak. So I'm, really, I'm going to have them, um, talk a little more about some of the issues in their schools and some of the work they're doing and, and for, in planning. As you know, from the last school committee meeting, um, both Gibbs and us have presented their working plans, some of the issues that they have to address and they're different now from both schools. And that, that work has been going on and will continue. As you know, from the state, middle schools must return in person full-time uh by April 28th. A, a decision has been made on, um, that we are in the Amazon is that both middle schools will actually start full-time on Tuesday, April 27th. And we're asking the school committee tonight to approve a planning day from Monday, April 26th. So these, these, both of these are after April vacation. And the reason why we're recommending starting on Tuesday is that the fourth quarter begins on Monday. Now that's different for the middle schools and the high school, but we can talk more about that. When, actually a little bit today, but more the next school committee meeting. So I'm, I'm here tonight, uh, as I said, Principal Maringer and Principal Pierre Maxwell and I, Mr. Maringer is going to start presenting where they are and some of their, in their working plans for opening.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Um, also with me is Ms. Rubino, who is the seventh grade assistant principal and Ms. McEwen, who is the eighth grade assistant principal. So Rochelle and Julia, if I miss any talking points, help me out here tonight. Um, I just wanted to give you an update. Um, so we were here last week and we kind of rolled out some of the challenges that we were going to have at the Audison Middle School. I think we've made some progress this week. So I did meet with the director of facilities, Greg Walters and Fergal O'Brien. This, um, this week, we went through some of the unused rooms just to make sure that the ventilation is good. They're getting a report back to me. They went through the building with some texts, just making sure that the ventilation system is, uh, up to par. So I will be getting some information. We will be having 17 teachers who have been teaching remotely this year back in the building the day after April break. So we do have a good amount of teachers coming back to the building. We did, uh, finish the survey to find out how many students wanted to come back from the full remote academy back to in-person learning. We had 33 families reach out, so we have 33 students coming back. We had two students that chose to be all remote. So we're having 31 students kind of as a net gain coming back to in-person learning. From a logistical standpoint, um, this is good news for us because we're able to accommodate all 31 students in our present learning community structure. So the three learning teams that we will have right now that have been remote right along, they will stay remote. The schedules for those children will not change. So they're relatively not impacted by 31 of their classmates coming in for in-person learning for the five days. I have met with members of the IT, um, department and they're going over just how to load some new classes. We're going to have to make sure that we have a new schedule because as I said last time, we're moving from six periods to our more traditional seven periods, which is what the remote academy has been on, um, right along. So our next step for scheduling-wise is now that we know how many learning communities we're having, how many kids that we're going to have in the building, is to make sure that we're moving kids around so that they get all the classes that they need. Um, we, we are very fortunate. I know we've talked about lunch before. We are pretty fortunate at the Audison to have two large gyms. So we will be able to have lunch inside when needed. Um, we also have some space out there, so we were fortunate this week to be Monday, Tuesday and Thursday. We had lunches outside. We will be eating outside. Pretty much anytime it's 50 degrees or above, we're outside and that's kind of our, our make or break point. And so hopefully we're out there consistent. Lunch is going to switch from 40 minutes to about 23 minutes in the schedule. Kids will notice that right away. Uh, but it's also kind of less time for the kids to be in, um, all together eating lunch, which I think is, um, safer. Um, we are looking at various things. I know Kevin Cummings, who is our lead PE teacher, has got in tou- touch with the town. We're going to use some town fields for PE, so we can also have classrooms out a little bit more often at the Audison. So one of the things that Dr. Bodie did say is getting that Monday, uh, when we come back from April vacation um, as a professional day and there's, um, I'm a big proponent on it for many reasons. So first of all, one of the things where the custodians are going to be really doing during April break is they're going to be moving a lot of desks. We have 12 desks in most all of our rooms. We're going to need to have anywhere between 20 and 24. We do have community ed that's in the building at that time. Um, so the custodians are going to have to kind of work around them, but also make sure that all the rooms are set up and ready to go. Um, we definitely want to give time for those 17 teachers who are coming back in the building to be able to set up their rooms. It is a new start. It's the first day of the fourth quarter, so all specials classes has changed, which means in itself, all schedules have changed. We have 30 students who are new to the building. We'd like to offer them some time to get in on that Monday. I believe we have 16 students who are in seventh grade who have never been in a day for the Audison. We would like them to be able to come in and hopefully decrease their anxiety of coming in. From a purely teacher's perspective, they're going to have to recreate all their Google classrooms. They're also going to have to make sure that all of their grades transfer because grades are due right before April vacation. And when you switch classes, a lot of times you have to make sure that in your system, you've also transferred those kids. So there's some tech work that needs to be done as well. I guess I'm looking at this as like a reopening and at the beginning of the year, you have two days in which teachers are back in the building preparing. And I think we might need some of that as well. I want to make sure all the schedules are all set. We've copied off the schedules. It's not uncharacteristic that you have kids the first day of school, usually right after Labor Day, who have a glitch in their schedule or might need some help finding somewhere. We don't want that to happen. Like, we want this to be as professional and as, as just locked up as possible for the safety of our staff and our students. And that's why I think that one day after April break, teachers are in the rooms, setting up, meeting, planning, changing their Google classrooms, making sure that everything is all set administratively. It allows us to have some time and have kids in the building. So that is, that is why I'm hoping that we'll be able to have that Monday. And then it means that we don't have a Monday, Tuesday cohort A, cohort B, starting Wednesday. I'm thinking that we just have, have that day and then Tuesday, we're, we're in to go. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Maringer and Mr. Hayner?
Rostov, I'd like to say thank you for all of your work and your team's work. I don't envy you. It's real easy to say, do something and then walk away and have every, you folks have to do it. You've done a great job. Couple of quick questions. You mentioned the idea of using the gym, uh, the gyms for lunch. Is that going to mess up the PE schedule if you have a, if you have a rainy day or something like that?
No, we're, because we're fortunate that we have both the wood gym and the blue gym and the cafeteria, we're not going to have to use the blue gym to have students eat. We currently do right now, um, but we will be able to reconfigure lunch. So right now we have a seventh grade and an eighth grade lunch. We're actually going to have three lunches now. And because we can divide the blue, the wood gym, there's a huge divider in there. We can make two rooms with the cafeteria. So if it is raining, all three teachers will be able to use the blue gym. And as luck would have it, for the PE teachers, it can be divided into three different rooms with wood dividers. So we've actually gotten, I mean, I, I know a lot of schools lunches is challenging. One of the real benefits about the Audison is having two very large gymnasiums in which we can have kids for lunch and PE.
My other question is, uh, lunch, uh, you've always got the student that, that does more like me, too much talking and not enough chewing. You're now almost cutting the, the lunch period in half. You've got a large facility, getting children from point A to, to lunch. I, is this going to cause a major problem?
I don't think so. So they're going back to their regular lunchtime. Um, Julie will tell you, I think, that, you know, it's from, from most of us, we've enjoyed a longer lunch if you're the faculty. Uh, but we're going back to our usual schedule. And we, I, the custodians have done a great job. They set up little tables outside. So the kids just go outside, grab their lunch and, um, are ready to go. I actually think some of the kids, we have 40-minute lunches. I think it's actually five or 10 minutes too long. I think the kids kind of get antsy. And I think it will be better actually when you have the, the shorter lunches. I think the staff has enjoyed the longer, um, lunches. As someone who does lunch duty, I'm looking forward to the shorter lunches. Um, but overall, I think it's plenty of time.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Fieldman?
I, first of all, Mr. Maringer, congratulations on all the trophies behind you there. Is that, is that from like men's league basketball?
That is none. That is all my kids. I, I have some like small little plaque in the corner, like.
I, I saw that. I said, you know, if I won trophies in men's league, I'd put them, I'd put them up to.
No, no, no. Those are, those are all my kids.
All right, cool, cool.
But thank you for noticing.
So I, I just want to say, uh, congratula-, you know, I like your energy, how positive you are. And it seems to me like you have a very sound plan to get the school back to, to, to in-person. So the only thing I want to say is my compliments for the work you're doing and your leadership. Uh, I read some of the communications. They're very clear, very concise. So congratulations.
Well, you know, thank you for the compliments. I appreciate that. I have two great, uh, assistants, uh, principals who are in the building and Maureen Murphy also helps me with the remote. I would say they are fantastic in editing and writing half the stuff that I put out there. Um, so they've done a great job and the staff has been fantastic as well. Um, you know, I was real happy when we did some of the vaccinations to see the teachers support each other and go around the building and help each other. I, I mean, I think that the teachers are, are tired. I think they have done a tremendous job, but I think they've been like the backbone. And it's been nice going into the building this year because the staff has just worked so hard. So, um, I, I think, you know, the staff and the assistants have done a real great job and made us all, you know, as good as we can.
Great. Thank you very much. And congrats on all the trophies.
Yeah, I'll tell my kids.
Great. Anybody else for Mr. Maringer? We definitely, you know, I, I have an eighth grader at the Audison and, uh, you know, there was definitely times when I was in elementary school where the narrative about the Audison was that people were worried and they didn't know and, and how it was going to be. And, and now I feel like the Audison has been sort of become like the darling of the Arlington Public Schools a little bit, like especially in COVID times. And, uh, and I think it's really just, um, the communication has been outstanding. We appreciate, um, the messaging. We appreciate you coming here to share with us. Um, and we know that if, you know, if we have questions, they will be, um, they will be answered. So, um, I think the, the other piece, so, um, can we have a motion on the, I gotta pull it up here. Ms. Fitzgerald typed it up, so maybe somebody typed it. So, um, to approve the planning day on Monday, April 26th for the Gibbs and Audison staff and for the return of all students for full-time in-person learning on Tuesday, April 27th, 2021.
So moved.
I just, okay, I have a question.
Let's see, let's see if there's a second and then you can. Okay, uh, motion by Mr. Schickman, second by Mr. Hayner, Mr. Fieldman, discussion.
Well, it was actually a point of order. I was wondering, aren't we going to hear from the Gibbs principal first, then vote on this motion?
I, you know, we should actually. I am sorry, Madame Pierre Maxwell, that was harsh. Um, I, yes, we absolutely should. So, uh, let's, Mr. Schickman, are you okay with, with, um, tabling your motion so that we can hear from Madame Pierre Maxwell and Ms. Salvatore and then take it up?
Madame Pierre Maxwell is certainly within the scope of the motion, so I don't see a need to withdraw it. I think we can just enjoy the presentation.
Great. All right. Um, Madame Pierre Maxwell, tell us about the Gibbs, please.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I, I did think Dr. Bodie and Mr. Maringer did a.
Good evening, everyone. I, I did think Dr. Bodie and Mr. Maringer did a great job. I, I didn't need to speak for you to pass the motion, but I will present. So, thank you, everyone, for giving us an opportunity to give you an update to where we are. I'm here tonight with Ms. Salvatore, our assistant principal at the Gibbs, and we're happy to fill you in. So, like the Odysseum, we also sent out a survey and it was closed this afternoon at 5:00 PM. We have a total of 26 parents who've selected to move from the remote program to the in-person program. And currently, three parents from the hybrid program would like to go to the remote program. That said, we also have a few other duplicates and several answers that we need to check to make sure that we are clear. These are the actual numbers. But the clear numbers are 26 remote, two in-person, and three hybrid to remote. Hopefully, when I see you in two weeks, the numbers do not change, but we do need to check in with some of our parents. The building is ready. Based on those numbers, it would not create any challenges to sit all of our students because in fact, it would be a total of 23 students moving in. If you subtract the three, that would be moving from hybrid to remote. The last time we presented, we had a, a chair issues desk looking at being able to sit everyone if we were at maximum, if we had a big transition from the remote to the hybrid program, that issue is resolved. We did receive an extra 139 desks from one of the elementary schools that we will be using. So, on the second of April, our head custodian planned to be, measure all the classroom and add all the desks based on the number we will have in every classroom. So, we will know if we'll still be able to have the children have enough desks for the cafeteria and the gymnasium. But that said, we have purchased yoga mat for every student for a sitting inside or outdoor when weather is nice for them to be able to eat outside. So, whichever way it turns out, we'll be able to accommodate the children to eat indoor or outdoor. It looks like the gymnasium will be available to be used for PE first, second block, and then a fifth and sixth block, but not third and fourth, which is the time we'll get ready to serve lunch. So, the children will be in there at that time. We're not able to not use both location, the cafeteria and the gymnasium to serve. We need both location to be able to serve three lunches for, for the period of time. We have not enjoyed a 40 or 45 minutes lunch. It's been 25 minutes at the Gibbs, so, and it will remain the same. The facilities look great. We also had a, a walk with Mr. Mason and Mr. Walters. We're still waiting just on two classroom to confirm that it's safe to transition Mr. Ham, our music teacher, back to the music room. And we have a DML classroom that's at the bottom of the Maison in from the media center. It's just two rooms we need to clear. Otherwise, we're all set and ready to go from a building perspective. Band chorus and orchestra is remaining in the afternoon, really allowing us to be able to continue to service the students and receive their lessons for the end of the school year. Today, we had, this week, we had two very productive, productive conversation, planning for the reopening. One with our special education teacher of the year zone and, and all the service providers. Yesterday, we spent some quality time looking at services for students. What would that look like within our schedules? So, there's still some challenges, but it's clearer what we need to do. So, we have all hands on deck. Everyone is working on that. We are very hopeful that it will be smoothed out and every student will be able to get most of their classes without having to remove too many things from their schedules such as they're missing their ELC classes, et cetera. Today, we had a great conversation with our social emotional learning staff, looking at things such as transition for the students, preparation for when they come together as a team, having a forum for parents, anticipating all the piece that will make the students feel at ease and removing any kind of SEL issues we need to be mindful of before we bring the students together. So, we're going to continue to do the work and then plan for it, but I, I am very hopeful. Ms. Salvatore is all hands on deck, looking at our schedule from what was presented, what were the challenges yesterday? I don't know if she wants to speak to that a little bit. But we are in a good place overall. We're looking forward to fielding some questions from parents also before we return. So, when we meet with them, we've selected a date for the parents. It's going to be April 8th. We'll be meeting with parents and then after that, we will share what date we'll do, agreed and meet for our students from the remote program who's never been in the building. So, they'll have a tour and then we can get them acquainted a little bit with the building before they return, they join us for the in-person program. Thank you for listening.
Questions for Madame Pierre Maxwell? I'm going to let Dr. Bodie go first and then take questions from the committee. So, Dr. Bodie?
It's not a question. I just want to compliment both our principals and teams on this. I will say that there's some underplaying, how much work, I wouldn't say underplaying, but there's a lot of work yet to be done. One of the things, as was mentioned last meeting, is that it's, it's, it's going to be necessary to do a lot of hand scheduling, particularly at us. And we certainly work with, they, they have worked with IT, have tried to look at every which way they can do a proxy schedule, dummy schedule, in order that we at least can get a schedule in place. But then after that, it's still hand scheduling. So, they have a lot of work yet to do. But I think that you can see from the last meeting how much progress has been made. And we'll give you, if there's any updates we need to give to you, we'll certainly do that before they begin on April 27th. So, I want to thank them all for this. And the teaming that's going on between the two schools is, is very high. And that's also important for people to know as well.
Great. Questions for Madame Pierre Maxwell about the Gibbs? Mr. Thielman?
Very much. Thank you, Madame Pierre Maxwell, for the presentation. It was very helpful. I just want to clarify, I heard, I want to make sure I heard this correctly. I saw your presentation, this, the PowerPoint beforehand. So, the remote, the number of students studying remotely is going to stay roughly the same, 150 or so. Is that correct?
Yes, about 125 right now.
Okay, so it's going, okay. All right. There, I'm going to ask this question. Several parents, a few parents have, have inquired as to whether or not the middle school can open the, the Gibbs, Gibbs Middle School can open on April 5th along with the K through five school. And I just wanted to know what your response would be to that question?
We do have a lot of paperwork to do in, in regard to looking at our students who receive services to make sure that it's well taught out and that some of them have at least three or four different type of services throughout the day. So, that's still in the making. I'm not sure if we could get all this done effectively and then hold parent forums and do an orientation for our students. We don't have 17 staff who's moving from the remote to in-person, but we do have 10 staff coming in. So, at, at some degree, the same movement and task that's happening at Odysseum is happening at Gibbs. We have the advantage of a schedule that falls in better, but it doesn't really remove the same steps that we're taking at Odysseum is happening at Gibbs. It's just from a different perspective.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I would just concur with.
Ms. Salvatore, go ahead.
I would just concur with Madame Pierre Maxwell that while it's not as much, there's still quite a bit that we need to do. And to say that we'd be ready in a week is, is not fair, I don't think, at this point.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions about the Gibbs? Great. Okay. So, more discussion on Mr. Schickman's motion around April 26th for a planning day. So, I just want to clarify, this, a planning day for the Gibbs and Odysseum staff means not a school day for students, right? So, let's, like, I want to make that really, I'm fine with the motion as is, but, you know, to those who are watching, you know, that it would not be a school day for students the Monday after April vacation. And then all students would return to school, would return to full in-person school on Tuesday, April 26th, which is one day earlier than has been, than had been communicated previously. So, I guess my, the discussion that I would want to have on this motion is I would just want to know that should this be approved by the committee this evening, that communication would go out to families about it tomorrow, on Monday? I don't know, sometime very soon, so that people understand and can be ready to plan for that. So, that's my only discussion on that. Mr. Hayner and then Dr. Bodie?
I just want to make sure everyone's clear. This is a planning day for the Odysseum and Gibbs only. The LA, it'll be a regular school day for the K to five. I don't want to miscommunicate that.
It will be. And, yep. I hope we, as somebody who has kids at a lot of levels, I'm, I am on board for this for April 2021 and never, ever again because this is total pandemonium for families who have kids at different levels. It's not pleasant, but I appreciate it's what we need to do right now. But I hope we are never in a situation again where we are bifurcating professional development days because it's terrible. All right, Dr. Bodie?
Thank you to Mr. Hayner for, for clarifying that. And I think that that needs to go out to the whole district on this. I will do that. The principals will also let their respective communities know. But one additional thing about this is that we are still, we are still being held to the 171 days this year. So, that means our middle school students, like our elementary students, will have their last day of school back on Woodbarn any new snowstorms on Thursday, June 24th.
Great. Any more discussion on this motion? Mr. Schickman and then Ms. Keys?
Of course, we're not going to have any more snowstorms. I, I just think that the planning on the part of our two principals and their staff has been extraordinary. This isn't an easy thing to do. And I congratulate them on, on making this progress and hope. If they need anything else, we've got another meeting in the beginning of April. Please come talk to us if you need anything.
Ms. Keys?
I'm only making this comment to save you 1,000 emails later. You are returning all in-person students to full-time learning, not all students. Our remote academies are going to continue to exist through the end of the school year.
Thank you.
Indeed. For those students participating in in-person learning. Okay, anymore? On this. All right. Motion by Mr. Schickman, seconded by Mr. Hayner, Ms. Exton.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Carden, go ahead.
Yeah, so that.
Down in school at the bottom of the screen and it's hard to see you.
Sorry. No, just, just to clarify that, you're, even though Ms. Keys is, is not a member, you're accepting that as a friendly amendment to the motion, right?
I have accepted that as a friendly.
To the motion. It's the motion that's, it's the motion that's misworded. All right, great. Thank you.
Ms. Exton? Yes, Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Allison Ampe? Oh, she's not here. Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Mr. Schickman?
Yes.
Mr. Hayner?
Yes.
And I am also, yes. Good night. Okay, any more conversations about full return, about full return planning? Ms. Exting, go ahead.
I, I have a, I have a question that has come up in our school committee chats and from other parents. And I'm just wondering if we can get some clarification. What are the, the expectations for students who are quarantined but are not with their, but not with their cohort? So, for example, my son this week was a close contact from something outside of school. So, he didn't go to school this week. What, what are the, because that's going to become five, six, seven days for kids as opposed to the two now. What should families expect students to receive during that time?
That's an excellent question. Our students all have access to Google Classroom. And just as if they were sick themselves, which happens during the winter, they will receive assignments through Google Classroom. Yes, that is one of the, combining with returning for, the students are going to be returning with our quarantine, yes, that is going to be an issue for some of our students that, that unless their cohort is also in, in a remote for 10 days, in that situation, they will be getting remote instruction. We, we can and will shift to remote in those situations. If it's, if it's a child that is, has, had been in close contact from, actually even in school or from outside, yes, that is going to be an issue in terms of getting assignments. And that's how we're, we're going to be able to do it. They are not going to be able to join a remote academy class. Those are classrooms with, you know, with a defined group of kids. So, that is one of the disadvantages. And that's one of the reasons we want to also keep our students as safe as possible to avoid that as much as possible.
Okay. So, so then there, the other piece to the question is, should families be concerned about, about attendance? And I, my, my understanding is that this year, there's sort of some leeway with the attendance because of these kinds of issues. Like, it's not necessarily a truancy thing that in other years would be considered.
Thank you. It's, it's not at all. You know, if the student is out of school due to a contact in school, it's very clear, you know, that that's an excused absence, not an issue. The same thing would be true in the situation where a student has identified as a close contact from another, in another venue. Same thing. No, we're not going to do that. But what is important is that the parents communicate with the, the principal, the school nurse, one or the other, to make sure that everyone is aware of the situation. And that way, it can be taken care of in, in power school. And I don't know if, I know one of our principals would want to comment any further in terms of the technical pieces of this. But yes, this is a different year and we are not going to have the same, if you're out, you know, five days, eight days, that is not going to trigger anything.
Thank you. And Dr. Bodie, I had just, and then Mr. Carden, one other question. What, do you happen to have, or if you don't have them right now, if you could send to the committee? I'm curious about the, the numbers of students. So, we have the, the, the net change at the Gibbs and the Odysseum that we got from Madame Pierre Maxwell and Mr. Maringer. Do you know what the net change was or the out-in numbers for K5?
I do. In fact, I was going to, as part of this planning, remember I said we'll do the elementary?
Oh, yeah. Okay. So, I will, I would like to hold my question because you're ahead of me. So, I'm going to call in Mr. Carden and we'll get to that when we get there. Thank you. Mr. Carden?
My question is about the high school, so I think she's getting to that. So, I'll hold my question.
Okay. Anything else on six, seven, and eight only? All right. Seeing that, I am trying to be better about releasing our administrative team. So, Ms. Rabino and Ms. McEwen and Ms. Salvatore and Mr. Maringer and Madame Pierre Maxwell, thank you so much for coming. Thank you for your excellent information. As always, it's a pleasure to see you and thanks for, thanks for everything. Thank you for your excellent information. As always, it's a pleasure to see you and thanks for, thanks for everything. So have a great night.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Dr. Bodie, do you want to go on to do elementary and then the high school?
Yes. At the elementary, I know that you're interested as we, we were too. Because the impact of how many students are going to be returning. From the remote academy to in-person is significant in all of our planning. Total there in all of our seven elementary, there are 80 students that are returning from the remote academy to. To back to a full-time in-person. We have two students that are moving from the in-person to remote. Now. The, the, we also have, we had 24 students who. Could not be placed in the same, in their home grade, home school. And they were offered a different school, same grade, of course. And we had only of the 24, three that agreed to replace in another school. Now of the 80, and that incorporates that, of the 80, it's pretty, it's pretty distributed throughout all of our schools. As well as grades. And I confirm that with. The, the people who kept all the spreadsheets and all of the different places that students were being placed. So like, if you, if you think of this proportionally, and we actually have fewer elementary students per school. Returning from remote than we even do at each of the middle schools. Which actually was a surprise to us, to be perfectly honest. We thought that there would be a greater return. Particularly our early grades, and I will say that there was more at the early grades. And, and that's actually where we had some more space problems in terms of students being placed in the home school. But we did make the offer. There was a. And, and so we're pretty, pretty settled right now on this number. So planning is going forward, which the, this affects, of course, class sizes, but even more so. Our specialist schedules and number of sections we need to have and all of the things that go into. Scheduling as, as Madame Pierre Maxwell mentioned, you know, scheduling all the special education services, ELL. That we, we need to reschedule. I will say that there's been a, a major effort to make sure that we disrupt those as little as possible. Though truthfully, I'm not sure that that can be entirely accomplished. But certainly the effort is being made to have that happen. So all of those schedules are in the process of being done. And as you know, there's a planning day that's going to occur on April 1st for elementary schools. So that will go as a reminder to everyone as well. But I, this has been helpful information for planning and that's where we are in that regard. We met, well, we meet every week actually, but we, this week we, we have focused on. You know, lunch planning, there's just a lot of details to go into that, but I will say that we are in good shape. Our elementary schools and the planning. And another thing that may not be as obvious in this return to. In-person full-time is the, you know, the attention to curriculum and pacing guides that have to take place. And so all that is going on as well. So that we're ready for the, for April 5th. Now, we do have some students that. That will be returning and individual schools are going to be able to, you know, work with these students who may have never stepped foot in a school. But they're very few in our numbers. So it's, can be handled on an individual basis. So that's sort of a broad view. I don't know if you have any questions. We can certainly, if you do, and there's things that I can't answer, we'll, we'll ask some of our elementary principals to come to the next meeting for updates. On how, how the transition, how the transition went. So if that, if there's any questions about elementary.
Great. I just wanted to clarify the numbers. So 80 are coming in person. Three of, three of the 80 are not coming to their, their original sending school. Or presumably if they're kindergarten or is there districted, buffered, you know, whatever school, right? But, but 104 or 101 of them, 101 people were, 101 students requested to come back. But some number of them didn't because they weren't assigned. They weren't going to be able to come to their sending school.
That's correct.
Okay.
And we have two that are, that are going from to the remote academy.
Correct. Got it.
So just like the middle schools. We are not going to need to change our remote academy. Which is something that was something that might be necessary. I will say there is one additional section we've had to create at Hardy. Those numbers in that classroom were already at max capacity and then some. So there was only one class, but we were able to. We had a teaching assistant who was certified and we were able to have a very smooth transition. And that person had already been working with the fourth and fifth grade. So we're in good shape in that regard as well.
Great. So questions for Dr. Bodie on K5? High school? Dr. Bodie?
I have probably less to report on that. We, the, the. Dr. Jangor would like to come and present at the next school committee meeting where he will have much more of a plan to give to all of you. Right now, it still remains the intent of the Department of Education. That they will give districts two weeks' notice and not in, in, in April. That is not changing. So that's really not a possibility to go with that kind of notice to changing your schedule in the high school. Right now, as you know, we have the departmental shift, but in having our students come back. Across the board in, in the current schedule, it, it means many things. Some of which you've already heard from the middle school. So that planning has already started. And one of the things that we also need to know is something similar to the middle schools and the elementary is. How many students? Would choose to be entirely remote? Right now, some, something like 300 students will not come in on the days that there's a departmental shift. And that number of around 20% has remained pretty constant. So the expectation is that's probably where the number will be and. But we, but I think that the high school wants to get some surety about that. The other thing that's complicated for the high school is how they do MCAS and how they're going to have that be sort of at the same time. As the AP, some of the AP exams are in the, in the building and some are remote. They're not all remote, which is another issue in all this planning. So that's basically where we are. And I know that they're, they're thinking about, you know. Setting perhaps their own date at which they come back and not wait for the Department of Education to only give them two weeks' notice. So I can tell you more about that when we, at the next school committee meeting. And certainly, we can give you as much information ahead of time so you're aware. But I, I, I think it's going to take these next couple of weeks to really get a little bit more sure to where the high school is.
Great. Questions for Dr. Bodie about the high school and Mr. Hayner?
Did I understand you to say that with the current. Schedule that they have right now, if the state, if Desi turns around and says you've got to bring them back in for full-time. It won't, they can't do it?
Oh, no, that's not what I'm saying. They're planning. Let me be really clear. The high school is planning to come back full-time.
Okay.
That's not the issue. It's that they can't wait for the Department of Education in April.
Okay, thank you.
You're happy back in two weeks. Now, the earliest I think the department would say would be right after vacation, just like the middle schools. But superintendent's asked that question this week of the commissioner and had nothing more, they said nothing more than. I've already said it will be in April, the decision, and yes, it'll only give you two weeks' notice. So if it's in April, two weeks' notice probably means it's possible that's right after vacation, that that would occur. But.
Thank you.
Please know the high school is planning around returning full-time. We are not thinking of applying for a waiver.
Mr. Corman?
That's the question I was going to ask and Dr. Bodie answered it. We're not planning on a waiver. So in two weeks when Dr. Jangor comes, we'll hear a proposal, we'll hear a plan to reopen and then we can respond to it. Okay.
Exactly. So, yes.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Yep.
Anybody else? Okay, anything else generally about full return planning? All right, seeing none. Um, excuse me, the next item on the agenda is, is EDCO. We are here at the, so the. Possible motion, should somebody choose to make it, is that the Arlington School Committee supports the vote of the EDCO Board of Directors to begin. The termination process for the EDCO Collaborative in order to dissolve the collaborative as of June 30th, 2022.
I'll move. Second.
All right, discussion. Seeing none. Um, all right, let's go, Ms. Exton. Yes, Mr. Carden.
Abstain.
Dr. Allison Ampe is not here. Mr. Thielman.
Yes.
Mr. Schickman.
Yes.
Mr. Hayner.
Yes.
And I am also, yes. All right, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent FY22 budget for approval. Which we have discussed on several occasions and the budget subcommittee met on Tuesday. It's been a bit of a blur. Mr. Carden, would you, I'm putting you on the spot here now. Given that Dr. Allison Ampe is here, would you be, not here, would you be able to give us a brief recap of that meeting? Before we vote on the budget?
Sure, although. I, I think for the purposes of the, of the public, it might be easier if I defer to Mr. Mason to discuss the highlights of the changes. But there were some significant changes made in the budget, which, Mr. Mason, I hope you can, you can walk us through. They're, you're, they're in your cover email, but just for the public. And I think the subcommittee was fine with those. We now have a large number of reserve positions, 10, which is good for the flexibility that we need with enrollments being so uncertain. But it was the will of the committee of the subcommittee to keep tabs on that very closely in the spring to make sure those. Resources are being utilized appropriately and, and with some oversight from the committee. So I think that was the main takeaway on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Carden. So Dr. Bodie, would you like to introduce your budget and Mr. Mason to talk about any changes?
Well, I would ask Mr. Mason if he could, can you share the list of changes or just speak to them? I know that you've had this in writing. The, the bottom line number that we have, we presented has shifted, I'm, I'm sorry, has not shifted. What has changed, I think this is one of the major drivers of the, some of the revisions. Is, is the amount of money that we're going to fund for our district placements. And, you know, Mr. Mason, could you talk a little bit about this? And then we can talk about, see if there's any questions from everybody about the changes that we've, we've made.
Yes. Yes, I can, I can speak to it. So as Mr. Len Carden has spoke about previously. We did increase the number of reserve positions. Previously, we had a total of six reserve positions. Three were. General Ed reserve positions and then the other were specifically going to be dedicated to three special education reserves positions. Now that we, when we did the rollover back in January of the positions that were, we were going to carry in our budget. At that time, we were not, we were not as certain of some of our needs and what's school was going to look like in September. And so. What was pointed out was that we did carry four additional positions from the Gibbs School. We have now changed those four positions over to reserve positions. That will be as, as Len stated earlier, or Mr. Carden stated earlier, that we will identify later in the spring. And those will be now reserved positions, making a total of 10. Also, we've made some changes into our special education out of district. Tuition. Budgets in this, in this proposed budget. We're reducing the special education out of district tuition by $1.2 million or a little bit above that. This was after. The special education department met with the business office in regards to how we are watching particular students. Who are identified as likely are possibilities of students to be placed in, out of district placement. And after doing a historical analysis, it was determined that about 10 students per year are placed. From this watch list that we would call it. And the watch list had several tiers to the watch list. And previously, we would fund the majority of tier one in a portion of tier two on the watch. So now it's been a change in practice. Which then led to us the ability to reduce the special education out of district tuition. But still have some, some, a little buffer in case there's unexpected changes. We also, since we were able to reduce the out of district tuition, that made other funds available in the budget. Which then was able to, for us to increase the electric, electricity and natural gas budgets. To 260, by $260,000. Which should be able to fully support those expenses on the general fund appropriation. And think about using other funds that are collected from different revolving, which we normally would place some utility costs. To be used for different projects to support our facilities. Department budgets were also were able to increase across the board using this additional money. Before we were level funding the other department budget. So we'll now be able to increase department budgets over $700,000. And then there was a minor adjustment. That was a real, a reallocation of, of a grant, which was a incorrect number that was put in. Due to a formula and that showed a reduction in PD, that, and a PD program code. That has been changed and corrected. They're still reflecting a reduction, but it's actually accurate and it's not. The, as great of a reduction as we were previously reflecting. That's all the changes to the budget. And I believe there was a motion provided to the school committee for the budget transfer categories. To the vote on, which is included in this budget document. And I will keep back to Dr. Bodie.
This might be a good point to mention where we stand with enrollment for next year because it does relate to the reserve positions. So I know many of you are familiar that in some elementary schools, it's, it's pretty consistent. You have three or you have four for grade. But there are also schools, even with that consistency, where you might have four in one grade and three in another. So when that grade moves forward, you know, you, you're going to move a teacher. But if you then. Remain with an expanded number of kindergartens, you have to add a teacher. So we, right now, it's looking like we could have two or possibly three schools in that situation. Right now. We have. Right now, we have 370 students that have actually completed their application. And I believe there's close to 80, no, more than that. No, I'm sorry, there's 400 students right now. 370 is where we were two weeks ago. There's 400 students right now that have completed applications and we have 78 that are pending. Now, we don't, no, we don't really analyze how many of those will be completed, but on the other hand, what that's saying is we're tracking as in a regular school year. Last, last time we met, we had 370, but at that same time, the previous year, we had 435. Well, that is, that difference between last year and this year is rapidly starting to change. So I, I can't tell you right now for sure, but we had only three reserve positions just for elementary and I'm already starting to see that those are gonna be necessary, at least two of them probably are. And, and then we have to take a look at where we are, certainly at our secondary level. As you know, this year we had students and we have parents concerned about the fact that in our, our four by four schedule, we had number of students who could not get the extra classes that they wanted. That is, that was certainly highlighted this year, but that's not, that's been something that's been an issue that students have not been able to necessarily get their elective classes at the high school. We have, you know, sort of been sort of behind pace in terms of what we need to do about elective courses, staff or elective courses. So I, I don't think, I think increasing beyond the three for gen ed is absolutely the right thing to do as we still trying to figure out where we're going to be in the fall. I think that each month we go along, we'll be able to refine that a little bit more. And clearly, if we don't need the positions, there are plenty in the five-year plan that we have not funded yet and come, come back to the table and talk about what some of those priorities might be.
Great. Questions for Mr. Mason or Dr. Bodie about the FY22 budget? Mr. Schickman?
I am supporting these changes, but I'm also aware that there's funding for COVID-related expenses and I think that increasing enrollment and increasing needs for students moving forward would be there. So my, my core question is, I guess philosophical rather than detailed. My assumption is that we will be coming back to think about additions to fulfill the needs that are directly related to the shutdown and return to school with supplemental money?
Yes, in fact, one of the areas which we haven't figured out what the budget is yet is a summer, summer programming. And this week, we got a little bit more clarity from the Department of Education, their expectation, which has changed from what we understood. We always have an ESY program and this year because we're ending the school year in a, both an in-person and remote model for this year, ESY, which is our special education programming in the summer, at all levels must offer both a remote and in-person. Now, we haven't figured out what that is going to, what the staffing is, and that's going to be. So that's one area where S R money can, can be used, not to mention our special, special ed budget. But we ha, as I mentioned in our, in the plane document I gave you two weeks ago, that we are planning on an expanded summer program for students. We had one last summer, we called it an expansive, expanded Title I program. And so we were able to fund some of it from Title I funds, but the rest of it was funded out of operating funds. The same thing as we're going to do this summer and the question is, how expansive can we make it? And of course, that requires staffing to do that and that those plans have already begun. I can't answer right now. What that, what that will look like will be the process. What I can say is that when we did it last summer, we use the Title I. Not, well, we use the Taiwan formula, but we, we, we looked at the students who would have been receiving Title I extra services. And we looked at the students, we thought we recommended they could use the additional programming. Now, one of the things that we have to look at, I really, maybe I can put this on the agenda for next time, but let me just say this. We thought a week or so ago that we were gonna have to offer a summer, a summer programming in both, both models in person and remote. Just this week, the department has said you do not need to offer remote. However, what we learned last summer was we had more participation when we had remote. So we're working through all this right now, but the short answer, without getting much further in the weeds than this, is that, yeah, the S R money will be used, a, a good chunk of it, how much of it will be used for summer programming to get kids ready for the fall.
I also think that there's a huge need for second language students to get back into the flow of learning English. Because that's something that really requires the interaction within schools. And, and to have a, a robust summer program for English learners, I think is going to also be essential and I hope that that's at the top of the list.
Um, yes, as you know, we've had that kind of programming in past years and for our our EL students and that was always at Bishop. Last summer, we did not have it. We certainly would like to bring that back because it was a very successful program.
It, it's more essential this year than ever. So I, I hope that's a priority.
Mr. Hayner?
One of the things that's consistently come up in all the chats and a lot of emails, parents concerned of what the, their children have lost during this year. I know it's a normal thing on a regular year, pre-pandemic is to do annual assessment at the end of the year to make the determination of what each child has grown and pass that on to the, the following year's teacher. This is more, more of a need this year than anywhere else. There are students that potentially have not gained what would be deemed normal and need tutoring or needing extra help, not in special ed, not ELL, not Title I. And there is federal money coming down and that money needs to be, in my mind, put in and invested in, in what has happened to these children. We need first off to find out what's happened and what needs to be done, whether it's just tutoring during the summer, way beyond what we've done in the past or additional support during the fall. And we need to do this as soon as possible to make this determination. This is something that parents are asking consistently across the board in all grade levels in all different groups.
Would you, could I ask Dr. McNeil to talk about the assessment structure we have in place? But I do agree with you that we, we, it's not gonna be just sufficient for the summer, but for the fall as well. So we're working on those plans and we can get back to you and you can see the progress we have been making on them. But you want to hear a little bit what the kind of assessments we've been doing?
I, I, I personally know that the teachers work very hard and do an annual assessment and, and I know Dr. McNeil's on top of that. I'm not questioning that. I'm just want, I guess it's more for the public, for everyone to be aware that this is a unique year and we're gonna have to be looking in the budget and stuff to expand the support for students and teachers going forward for what may have been lost. We have to first assess if there has been a loss and if there has, what are we going to do with it? I'm just presenting this. I'm not asking for any, I don't need a response. Maybe someone else on the committee needs a response.
I'll just make one comment, maybe a document. We use our own, for our own assessments to actually identify the students and we did this last summer for the students that need that extra support. And we had, was a five-year, five-week program, I recall, right? Dr. McNeil, yeah.
I guess my concern is not, we have good programs in place to deal with, with the kids that we have, the special needs kids, the Title I, ELL and stuff like, I'm talking across the board, taking the annual assessment we do for every student and what usually gets passed on to the next year's teacher to give a starting point for each of those students. We need to find out if we have actually had academic losses and if we have, what are we going to do?
One, we are assessing whether we have academic loss and last year's program was not limited to special educate, students with IP, ELL, Title I. It was much more expansive than that. So we would be using our assessments this year to identify those students who would benefit from a summer programming and that's our first approach to the summer programming. And it is not, it is, is a general ed and Title I and ELL programming.
My concern is limited funding and my understanding, I'll stand corrected, there is federal money coming to deal with the pandemic and stuff. And so I don't think we should be limited on a fu, a, a funding basis to handle these kids. That's all.
All right, anybody else? Mr. Cullen?
Kind of want to just pick up on what Mr. Hayner was saying, but the, so the stimulus money is specifically to help for reopening schools and remediation. So is there, I guess my question is to, to Dr. Bodie, is there a, a group within your team that is talking about how, specifically how to use this money, if and when it becomes available? It, it, to do remediation with students and like, are you think, are you talking about, thinking about the logistics of this? Who would teach, what, what it would cost to teach, how many people need, how many FTEs, all that stuff? That's kind of what I
We, we are, we are definitely doing that and we don't have the federal money yet. In fact, I don't even think it's, I don't even think Dusty has it yet, but what I can say is that the formula is about 2.2 times what we got for S R two, which is just slightly over 500,000. So with the federal money, I, the money for the summer programming is not going to be the issue. Certainly getting staff to do it after this year is going to be an issue, but maybe we can also hire outside of our staff. Our staff is certainly first priority on this. Whether we're going to, where we're gonna have it, whether it's going to be both remote and in-person. I learned the other day from Mr. Mason that the Dallin Chiller has, you know, could be ready to go because I think it's gonna be important if we do in-person like we do for our special education programs, we, we host that at Pearson Gibbs, just to make sure that we have a you know, air modulated environment for them. So we are definitely working on that and we'll keep you apprised of where we are in the planning. But to Mr. Hayner's point, we're using our assessments that we're doing to identify those students who would be invited to this, the, the summer programming.
Okay. Okay, I just, I mean, I I just want to make, I, I'm sure this not, is not going to be the case, but I just want to make sure that when and if this money comes, we have a plan in place, we're ready to go, we can execute on it and we're not scrambling at the last minute. We at least have a framework for how we're gonna do.
Can I, can I interject here? Dr. Bodie?
It's fine with me, it's fine with Morgan.
Miss Morgan, can I?
Dr. McNeil.
So we have a core planning team that has already met this week and we are actively planning right now. We're also talking with our reading specialists, our math interventionists, our principals, our teachers, in order to make sure that we're identifying those students who can benefit from such a program. And really, it, we're gonna replicate what we did last summer because we had a lot of success. So we've met this week and we're gonna be meet again. And so we've, we're already on top of this and we realize that we need to make sure that we are identifying all students and not letting anyone slip through the cracks. So we are utilizing there are assessments that we have in place that we give to all of our students. And then we're also talking to our math interventionists, our reading specialists and in order to also make sure we have a comprehensive list. So I, I anticipate that funding will also not be a problem. But as Dr. Bodie stated, after this schooling year with our staff, staffing may be an issue, but we're gonna do everything we can to make sure that we have the necessary staff for the programs. And I will also say that we are, we, we have a program going on right now from our community block grant that we offer to students within the district and it's a tutoring, a targeted tutoring program that where students are meeting with tutors after school and on the weekend for that targeted assistance. So we are we have programs going on right now and I would love to utilize that federal money, if possible, to maintain something year round. So we can offer and replicate what we're doing with the community block grant right now. So we have lots of ideas and we're, we're already on top of it, planning for the, for the summer and beyond.
Thank you.
Mr. Carden, I think you're, yeah, yep, go ahead.
Sorry, yes, with the background, you know, you see me waving. So, two points. One was that the, at the budget subcommittee meeting, we, we did mention that with the past S R money, we've been a little bit loose as far as the committee reviewing and approving the spending, but for this next tranche and also maybe for the 500,000, that looks like you're, you're planning to spend in the next fiscal year. We do want to make sure that there's a spending plan reviewed in our normal, in our normal fashion. So we do expect the administration as, as the money comes in to develop a plan and have that go through the budget subcommittee and be reviewed by the full committee later in the spring. I also just wanted to mention for Mr. Mason and the admin team that it's, it's almost certain, certainly true that the town's money can be used for some of these purposes. And the town is getting, you know, 30, almost 37 million dollars. So everything should be, staffing should be finding the right staff should be the only issue, not the amount that we're spending. I mean, obviously, we have to get approval for that money, but um we shouldn't be looking at 1.2 million as the ceiling. You know, we, we, we should be able to access some of that other money if it's necessary and it's, it's up to you to figure out what, what really is necessary for this, for the summer and for the fall going forward. Thank you.
And can I also interject one more thing, Miss Morgan? I also want to say a large portion of that money, we, we invested heavily into online tools. So the online tools are also available for the students over the summer, all students over the summer. So everything that we purchased last year, worked with Mr. Mason to make, to ensure that the licenser, the licenses that we purchased will go from August to August. So all students will have access to the online tools that we invested in for this past year. So it would be something for everyone. I guess my point is, is that all students will have the benefit of some type of support over the summer. And that's something that I think that we did a very good job at doing.
All right, anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I am looking for a motion to approve the budget transfer categories in the superintendent's proposed FY22 budget as follows. Administration, $3,592,271. Curriculum instruction, $1,855,919. Elementary, $23,428,272. Secondary, $23,732,683. Special education, $24,229,874. Other, $7,544,364. Grants, $2,897,649.
So moved?
Second.
Any more discussion? Seeing that, Ms. Exton? Yes, Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Mr. Schickman?
Yes.
Mr. Hayner?
Yes.
And I am also yes. Anything else on the, on your budget, Dr. Bodie?
No, thank you for your support.
And from the committee? Great, okay, the next item on the agenda is the diversity, equity and inclusion job description that is in Novus. Mr. Carden, would you like to tell us about this from CIA?
Sure, so this was in, in the budget draft that we've seen, and at one point it was a manager, now it's called director. But this is a similar position that other towns have adopted recently. The position description that was written by Mr. Spiegel with a lot of assistance from the entire administrative team includes some, some language from some of these other towns. It, you know, it's there available in Novus, the committee reviewed it, our only comment was to, you know, just give it some time for either the diversity and inclusion groups at the schools or the superintendent's diversity advisory group to give any other additional input that they may have, we did meet, our meeting actually at CIA was with two representatives from the Human Rights Commission, and they did want it, want everybody to know that they're very pleased that we are adding this position, but they didn't have any specific comments in the language. So the description is here before us, and Mr. Spiegel is available, I assume, or Dr. Bodie to answer any questions, thanks.
Great, thank you, Mr. Carden. And Dr. Bodie, is, do you have anything else you'd like to tell us about this, or Mr. Spiegel, before we have any kind of conversation about it?
Mr. Spiegel might want to give a little bit of feedback on what he has learned when he's put this out to the diversity groups. And it basically, they're also very pleased that we're doing this as well. I think was really just one or two issues, and perhaps you could talk about that, Mr. Spiegel? You're muted.
Can't hear you, actually, he's not muted, which is weird, we can't hear him.
He broke.
He doesn't have his.
Yes.
Okay. Just was on the, I'm still on my headphone mic, and I'm not on the headphone, so um, they, so we did get some feedback, there were some questions about the, the requirement for licensure. And it was, when we, we met with the central office, you know, we thought that it was appropriate for the person who would hold this position because it's in an education, in a school setting in the, in the district to have an educator license. There were some questions about whether that would preclude certain applicants. So we did amend that a little bit to, to say that you, you have a license or be eligible for licensure within the first year. One of the concerns we've had in sort of some experience we've had in the past with the mass teachers retirement system is that when a job description doesn't require a license and someone has a license, it could be, they might not be eligible to contribute to mass teachers, and they could be coming from another district, or they may have been in a position in a district where they have been contributing to mass teachers retirement, and it would not be really, they would not want to leave the mass teachers retirement system if they've been in it and in putting money into it, they could, if they couldn't go into mass teachers, they go into the town retirement system. And there are a few differences, I mean, but I think most people who are educators would prefer to be in the mass teachers retirement system, so. That's why we have that in there, I think we really, and I think the state this year, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has made it, has opened up avenues toward licensure for people who don't have a license. And it's good for the next year, there's something called an emergency license where someone who has a bachelor's degree can apply for an educator license under the emergency license, and they can, they can get that, and then they have that for another year, it will be good until June of 2022. And then would have to take M T Ls and get a regular license, but I think that's a reasonable expectation for someone who works in a school district, so. In this type of position that is really working with educators directly in educational programming, so. That was the biggest question that they had, and then you know, the, it was sent out to the dig, the digs and the Human Rights Commission as well.
Great, thank you, Mr. Spiegel. Comments from the committee on the job description, Mr. Haner?
First off, I'd like to commend Mr. Spiegel, I've been following all the emails going back and forth from the different groups, and he responded very quickly and very clearly with them and all their questions. I have only one comment to make on this. And I realize budgets are tight and everything, but I think the salary range on this is on the low end. And we want to get a quality person, and I would recommend to change it up to at least 125,000 at the top end. I'll leave the bottom end wherever they want it. That's a recommendation that I would offer as a friendly amendment to the passing of this.
Discussion? Mr. Schickman?
If that's an amendment, I'd support it, and if he made it formally, I'd second it.
If I may, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the job description as presented with being amended on the on the salary range to go as high as 125,000.
And I second that.
Great, discussion on the motion by Mr. Haner, second by Mr. Schickman, Dr. Bodie?
I just want to comment that this was done with a lot of thought in terms of the context of where salaries are for administrators in the district. And so the salary range was selected in that regard. If I were to make a suggestion, I can't make an amendment, that I thought maybe going up to 120 might be reasonable, but I, I think that going higher than that is not in line with other salaries.
Mr. Haner?
First off, this is a brand new position, it's a district-wide position, and I made that suggestion to be competitive with other districts around. We've, we've been looking to do that across the board as, as different salaries have come in. This position is unique, it is going to be highly sought after throughout many districts. And I want us to be there, be competitive in the market. I can appreciate that, what Dr. Bodie had just said, but this is a brand new position and it's system-wide.
Mr. Thielman?
So, I mean, I I defer to the administration on this one, I'll tell you why, because there is a lot of thought that goes into a salary scale, when you put it together, you have to compare this to other salaries, and the superintendent can come back to us if she goes to, when she goes to the market and gets applicants, and if she can't get someone at this salary range, she can come back to us and say, I have to change the range. So I, I personally, if I'm hearing from the school administration that done an analysis, and this would impact other or impact the salary scale for other like positions, I, I can't support the amendment, but if the superintendent said we could go to 120 based on her analysis, then I would be comfortable with that.
Mr. Schickman?
If I may ask the proposer, the proponent of the amendment, on what basis does he state that the 125 is required to be competitive with other districts?
Town of Burlington and a couple of other districts that have already hired people for this position, they're starting at 120, that I've seen, my research. What I heard from the superintendent is a concern about how other members of the, the staff and related. I understand that, but at the same time, I've said what I had to say.
Ms. Exton?
So I, I agree with Mr. Haner that from the perspective of other towns, that the numbers are low. That the average that I found from the town manager 12 that have this position or are hiring for it right now is 120. But I also appreciate the context within, within the district, and I'm, I was, I was looking, I don't have that information in front of me of, of the salaries within within Arlington, so. I'm inclined to support the motion based on what is what other towns are doing to hire for this position right now, and I know that it's a highly sought-after position. And a lot of, a lot of districts are looking for people to fill this position, and so I think we should be competitive for that reason.
Mr. Haner?
The rationale that Dr. Bodie gave is not something we have considered. The CFO spot, the assistant superintendent spot, for, and these, and the special education director, these are all comparable positions, this, this position is going to be responsible directly to the superintendent. And the, the positions I just mentioned are, their salaries are in excess of 125,000. I'm not suggesting that we, but that's where the comparison should be made within the district.
All right, further discussion on this? All right, so we have a, do we want to vote separately on the amendment by Mr. Haner and then take up the job description, so?
That's usually how it's done.
Thanks. So the amendment by Mr. Haner, seconded by Mr. Schickman, is there any more discussion on? So, Mr. Haner, your amendment is to, is to provide in the job description a salary range between 105 and 125,000 per year, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, any more discussion on that? Ms. Exton? Yes, Mr. Carden?
No.
Mr. Thielman?
No.
Mr. Schickman?
Yes.
Mr. Haner?
Yes.
And I am also, yes. So let's vote, so next would be a motion on the job description as amended. Any more discussion, is there a motion for that?
I'll move.
Second.
A discussion. All right, Ms. Exton? Yes. Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Mr. Schickman?
Yes.
Mr. Haner?
Yes.
And I am also, yes. All right. The next item on the agenda is the monthly financial report, Mr. Mason, we've punted you for weeks at a time, are we on to the next report at this point? Or, okay, we just, yeah, perfect, that's, that's the way to do it, outstanding, all right, Mr. Mason, tell us what you got.
Um, so I, I, I just want to basically, we, we have the monthly reports, that's not the month ending of January, which was missed, it was for the month ending of February 28th. This includes the, the three normal reports that you would normally see, which is the general fund, or town appropriation, grants and special revenue and revolving accounts. On the general fund, the town appropriation, currently we're projecting 672,000. Balance and, you know, we're getting closer to the end of the year, where we'll get a better understanding of where our balance will be, but there's still some spending, and, and you know, as of that particular date that's occurred in March, and that will possibly occur in April, that will lead to either for the reopening of schools and, you know, our normal spending routine is that departmental spending is stopped at some point or slowed down at some point in April. Most of that, once again, that balance is driven by the out-of-district tuition, which is what we did reduce in the FY22 proposed budget. And you just be mindful that we did, did prepay the 1.3 million in FY 20 for FY21 special education out-of-district tuition. We also did receive additional funds this year from the cover, like the federal funds from the CBRF and S R. So that is also, but if you think about that, that means that we really did spend more than what we normally allocated at this point, or what we're projecting to do, to do so. So I, I hope that the next report will be, give us a little bit more accurate picture of where we're going to end off, and and we're going to have to definitely look at, as Dr. McNeil spoke earlier, about some of the the different licenses that we might have to look at, where some of those licenses will end, and whether we have to do any additional procurement at the end of this year to continue to support those, the, the technology and software that we need to provide for students throughout the summer. I'll leave it at that, there's probably not much difference in the report than previous reports, besides that the projection is showing that it's going, showing a lower balance. I will open up for questions if anyone has it.
Great questions for Mr. Mason on his monthly report, Mr. Carden, you're doing great with the hand now, thank you.
Yeah, Jeff, when you were drinking, you were drinking from an invisible cup before, it was very, very cool.
Yeah, I worked that into my, my.
Yeah, the routine, yeah.
Do magic act, I got.
Okay, so, Mr. Mason, you mentioned the CBRF funding. So that funding has been spent on things that are not included in this report? Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so at some, at some point, we should get a list of what that was spent on, you may have given it to us before, but um, I don't know if you've shifted things around or what, but um, yes, the additional. Yes, so I, I would like a report on that at some point, thanks.
Sure, will do.
Anybody else for Mr. Mason, Mr. Schickman?
You're saying that we'll get a better picture of this in about a month? Can you just give us a sense on a scale of surplus happiness, the deficit nightmare, how are you sleeping at night?
I'm sleeping fine. So I, I, I'm sure that we'll, we'll be in a good spot, I think there's some further conversations that the budget subcommittee needs to have in regards to figuring out how we want to end the year, and in working with what we can actually turn back to the town. I, I think that that's where I was referring to a better picture. I think that it's important that since we did carry over some funds and prepaid that, them for special education out-of-district tuition, that we do consider any possible turn back this year, and so I do think that we'll be fine, but I, I'm, I'll have to wait and see until that March, April timeline where I'll get to see this final surge of spending come through my office.
I, I, I get a sense of where you're sitting right now, thank you for that answer.
Yeah.
All right, any more questions for Mr. Mason? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mason, I'm glad we, glad we got you on our agenda, finally. Good to hear from you, as always. Okay, superintendent's report, Dr. Bodie?
And hey you.
Sorry, I have three things, one of which is the webinar and actually the public forum, we had this last week with Dr. Beverly Daniel Tatum, and I'm going to actually ask Dr. McNeil if he'd be willing to talk about that, and then just a quick update on the high school and athletics.
Yes, so, yes, thank you, Dr. Bodie, hopefully, many of our school committee members were able to attend on Sunday, I know it was a beautiful day outside. But I want to first start off by saying that I would like to acknowledge Andrea Nicolay, Director of our libraries, Anna Litton, Assistant Director of the Robbins Library, Julie Dunn, Director of Communications, Grant and Title I, and Gillian Harvey, Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion for the town, for their support and planning and their collaborative efforts to plan this event, it was so exciting, it was definitely a highlight of my career to have a conversation with one of the most premier experts on racial equity and racial identity. Dr. Tatum's answers were clear, she gave a lot of. She gave a lot of concrete steps that I feel that people were listening could take back and incorporate in their conversations with their children from the community and educators could take the things that she shared back to their classrooms immediately. I also want to acknowledge the Arlington Education Foundation for their support as always. And it was just a, a great event. And I've heard nothing but positive feedback from the community. And then we were also able to have her back on Monday, the 21st, for Arlington staff. And Ms. Harvey moderated that conversation. And so again, that was from the support from the, the libraries and Arlington Education Foundation. And so we had about, on Sunday, we had about 289 people attend. And then on Monday, it was about 200, 206. So we had quite a few people attend. And you know, just some of the highlights of the things that she talked about, provided us with an overview how we can support our students of color and really understand how students and people develop, you know, their racial identity and what kind of things add to that or take away from that if we are not very vigilant about making sure that there's representations of all cultures in our curriculum and in our public school environment and in the, in the overall environment within the community of Arlington. One of the things she talked about were the ABCs, where, you know, we have to provide affirmation for everyone. And we have to take efforts to build community, which includes all of our students of color and people of color within our Arlington community and cultivating leadership. So those are some things. She also talked about the importance of affinity groups. And she talked about, again, a curriculum and making sure we have representations of all people and their cultures. And so I, I feel like she gave us a blueprint for how to move forward. And we're also going to extend these conversations. I'm in talks with Dr. Liza Tulluson, who has come in and helped parent forums within the community in the past. And we're going to identify dates where we can have, we have some tentative dates planned right now. But because of our bringing all the kids back K through five and at the middle school, we're going to push those dates out so we can have more participation. So we're going to continue these conversations, continue to have, utilize the book, Dr. Tatum's book, as a foundation for those conversations. And I look forward to the learning that we'll have and the discussions that we'll have as well. So any questions or comments? And again, I want to extend the offer to any school committee member who doesn't have the book. We have purchased it, purchased the book for all Arlington staff members. And I have extra copies in my office. So if you would like a book, please reach out to me and I can make one available.
We'll have it delivered.
Right, we'll have it delivered. Absolutely.
I would just add to your comments. First of all, thank, thank you, Dr. McNeil, because you offer a lot of leadership in, in this. I thought that she was quite personal, she was very personal and also at the same time, quite profound in terms of her observations and ideas for us that we can learn from and move forward with. So we are also taking the audit study that was offered. We have a report on, and that's going to be some foundation for all the curriculum work that will go on this summer. So it was an amazing time to meet with her, I wish. So I think everyone who attended really was impressed and learned a lot from her. So thank you for, thank you for all you've done to make it possible.
Sure, Dr. Bodie, I just also want to add that the conversation, both conversations were recorded. And the conversation, Sunday's conversation is available on the ACMI website.
Great, thank you, Dr. McNeil. I saw that Ms. Exton wanted to make a comment or had a question. So Ms. Exton? Thank you. No, I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. McNeil for, he essentially facilitated the conversation with Dr. Tatum on Sunday that I had the opportunity to attend. And I thought you did a really nice job. It was exciting to listen to both of you sort of engage in that dialogue about real things that are happening here in Arlington. You know, she, she helps the community to dive into things that we're thinking about here. And I, I appreciated the role that you took in that as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great, Dr. Bodie, back to you.
All right, back to me. I want, at the high school, we always do a little bit of an update. Things are moving quite well. I wish you could be in the school committee room because you have a bird's eye view of, of the progress that's going on. So that is, that's, that's happening. We're now starting to begin some of the work of the interior committee. And that fact, first of those many meetings are gonna, is starting tomorrow. So that's moving forward. And the next building committee meeting is Tuesday, April 6th. One thing I would encourage people, anybody who's still listening here, to like look at the AHS building website because there's a wealth of information. But I think what is very interesting is to look at the videos that are there. So that's where we are at the high school, unless you have any questions. And then the other is athletics. One thing I, because of the time last, last meeting, I omitted mentioning the ski team this year. They, they had a great season. It was the first season they represented Arlington High School. And that they, they just had a, a great season for the first one and look forward to many more seasons having a ski team. We, currently, we are in what the, it's called the fall two. So this year, we're having four seasons of athletics. And right now, we have 250 students enrolled in fall two, which includes some of the sports that were, you know, outside looking at the football field. But the fact that we have 250 students, that is terrific. It's a way for them to relate and be together. And I, I do appreciate that we are limiting spectators to, to per athlete. But many of these are live, being livestreamed as well. We will be moving into the last season of the year on April 26th. And I'm expecting there'll probably even be more students going out for the, the spring season. The one thing I will point out, we had a very interesting event. I think that one of the first of the kind though gymnastics, some of this as well, this, this, in the winter, is a virtual track meet. And our first one was, I think it was with Reading. And we had 110 students, you know, doing the various races. And each, each community or each team would put their scores into a third party. And that's how you, you learn whether you, you won that particular race or not. You know, it was very, very interesting. And who knows, maybe that'll be something that will continue. It's hard to say in the future. But at any rate, the, the kids are doing well. And I commend them all for all the effort they put into the practices, which I can see myself as I leave the building. Um, last, I guess that's it. That's the last thing I wanted to mention. We talked about enrollment already, so that's my report for tonight.
Great, thank you, Dr. Bodie. Questions or comments from the committee? All right, seeing none. Consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine, will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee. So requests in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Warrant for approval, warrant dated 3/16/2021. Warrant number 21203. Total warrant amount 768404.22. Minutes for approval, school committee regular meeting, March 11th, 2021.
I'll move.
Okay. Ms. Exton? Yes? Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Mr. Schickman?
Yes.
Mr. Heiner?
Yes.
And I am also yes. The next item on the agenda is policy BEDB, Agenda Format Prep and Dissemination, and JKAA Physical Restraint of Students. And this is a first read on both policies. Is that correct, Mr. Schickman?
That is correct. BEDB was brought forth at the policies meeting yesterday by Mr. Heiner, who will become our chair, assuming we follow through and elect him next month at his request to extend the deadline for getting things into NOVUS for the committee. For workdays preceding the school committee meeting, which would normally be the Friday before the school committee meeting, is a necessary provision to allow us to look over materials and understand them before the meeting. He hopes that will shorten the meeting. The other policy before us for first read is is JKAA Physical Restraint of Students. This is a technical correction to bring the policy in line with current state regulations. Both are before us for first read and for consideration at our next meeting.
Mr. Heiner?
I'd just like to add, on the agenda format, I also requested that the, as not only the materials be presented to the school committee, but summaries of any reports and our media be provided to the members as well.
All right, any other discussion on this? Okay. So I, I mean, I think my comments on the BEDB, the Agenda Format Prep, I mean, I will tell you that over the last nine months that I have been chair, we have not had an agenda that has been fully ready on Friday, let alone all of the materials. But I, you know, I, I wish, I, I, you know, it may be in times when things are a little bit more stable and less unpredictable, then maybe that will be possible. But it's, I, I've definitely found it hard in, in COVID times. But, you know, certainly, I, I appreciate the intent of it. So I think, you know, we just, we just see where it goes. I know that both Mr. Heiner and Mr. Schickman have been, have had a lot of feedback for me on the length of our meetings, which I have been grateful to receive over the last 10 months. And I am grateful will be ending in two weeks' time. And I will no longer receive such feedback. But I am glad that, I, you know, I think that this is, I can certainly support this policy if it's what, you know, if it's what people want to, want to do. So we can figure that out in two weeks' time on our second read. So other comments, I see Mr. Heiner and Mr. Thielman.
I mean, we'll.
I'll defer to Jeff.
Okay, sorry, thanks. I mean, we're, we'll talk about this next week, but I certainly love the idea of trying to get information beforehand. I don't know. I mean, I'd like to hear from the administration. People are very busy within the administration. I think if we enforced the two-day work, the 48-hour rule, that would be a good thing and help people with that. But I don't know, we can talk more next week. And I, I guess my, my request is I'd love to see what the superintendent and her staff say to this suggestion. I'd like to hear their thoughts on how practical it is.
Mr. Heiner and then Mr. Schickman?
I just want to add that if something is an emergency, that can be brought before the board, five minutes before the meeting. That, I, I want to make that clear. And I'm not going to, Dr. Bodie and Dr. McNeil talked at the meeting, but I'll let them give their opinion right now, if they wish.
I, I can certainly wait till the next meeting, but I will say that people have been working very hard to get documents to people on time. But it has been a challenging year to do that. And certainly, Ms. Morgan and I have worked, not for lack of work on this and discussions to get the agendas done. I, I, the, the, as read in the policy, if you don't have the documents on Friday, then that takes that agenda item and moves it to the following school committee. So one of the things I think that the committee will have to be also cognizant with this policy is that if you make a motion at a school committee meeting to have a particular report at the next school committee meeting, in effect, you're, you're really only giving administration one week. And so that needs to be carefully considered in terms of the scope of what you're asking people to do and abide by this.
Mr. Schickman and then Mr. Heiner?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things we're looking to do is set the table moving forward for the new administration in July. That said, as a central office employee for 19 years, working in Lowell, which was very strict with the Friday 4:00 PM rule, it can be done. And if the deadline is Wednesday or Tuesday or Friday, no matter when that deadline is, it seems just from the school department side, from when I worked, that we were always pushing to the last minute on that deadline day. And a lot of the reports were receiving a routine and things that are scheduled far in advance so that it's not unreasonable to have the meeting sketched out. And, and I think that we have to have a commitment too, to be reasonable in terms of the reports we're asking for and the agenda items we're asking for. A lot of it's predictable. And we do have provisions for emergencies. For example, when the commissioner goes and lays down a new directive 24 hours before the meeting or 48 hours before the meeting, of course, we have to get it on there and, and, and put items into NOVUS to inform folks of what's going on. But so much of what we do is routine and predictable. We deserve the opportunity to read and be thoughtful and understand what's happening before the meeting so that the, the presentations and discussions we have are relative to folks being fully informed of the basics on the issues before we start talking, rather than leading us through all the information within the context of a meeting. It takes away our time to deliberate. And as you're aware, this is the only place where school committee members are allowed to talk to each other. I, I think it's an essential part of doing good business and it requires a little more discipline on the part of the committee of our chair and the new administration. But it's very traditional that other school committees operate in this manner. And, and I think that we need to tighten our procedures up.
Mr. Heiner and then Mr. Carden?
I just want to add one thing. I, I also need the time to understand the materials going forward and to be supportive of our administration. I don't want to be learning something at the last minute and then reacting to it. I'd rather have a reaction ahead of time, talk to the administrator and make sure I'm clear. More, more than often, a simple little conversation can clarify things.
Mr. Carden?
Yes, I'm sorry, I stepped away for a minute. I, I didn't hear, was the rationale for this change because we want more time or because we weren't actually getting the documents the two days in advance? Which, which has, which had been, was the case when I was chair as well. So was there one or the other or, or what?
Mr. Heiner?
I think it's both. Need, needing the time to be reflective on the materials being presented and not getting them at the last minute or getting them in a reasonable amount of time so that we're not learning about it that night. I don't, I hope I didn't muddy the water more.
No, that's, that's fine. I mean, from my perspective, I think the two days is, is sufficient. If, if we can be certain that the documents are always going to be there. It's always a pain to have to keep checking on Wednesday, then on Thursday morning, and then waiting for Karen to send something. So that's, that's been part of my challenge. As, as chair, part of the challenge was, you know, Monday, Wednesday morning, waking up, finding things missing. Do you then cancel that agenda item because of the policy? Was pretty draconian, but, but, but obviously, we probably should have done more of that because now we've, we've let, let it slip so much that it's not really a rule anymore. So I definitely support enforcing the existing rule, but I'm not sure I need more time. Thanks.
Mr. Schickman? Mr. Schickman?
I, I, I think the time is also critical because if we get things, uh, at Tuesday at four, uh, if you're busy on Tuesday night and, and we're coming up to town, meeting season, be, we'll, we'll be out eight to 11 on, on the Wednesday. There's not a lot of time to stop and think and read and look over things. The, the 48 hours isn't enough. And back in the day when we were getting things on Friday and you had a weekend to go and analyze and read and think about it and go through the budget documents and, uh, and, and respond with some email back if, to administration, to the superintendent if there are questions. That facilitates a better meeting because we're all on the same page. Uh, and, and we understand where we're going. Uh, the, the Tuesday turnaround, even if it's being uh, obeyed religiously is, is awfully fast during busy times of the year.
All right, anybody else on either of these policies for first read? All right, seeing none. Uh, subcommittee liaison reports and announcements. Uh, we heard from Mr. Carden about budget and Dr. Ellison, he isn't here, community relations, Mr. Heiner.
Uh, we had the meeting the, uh, last Monday to discuss the travel policy. Dr. Bodie already, uh, has shared that with everybody. We also discussed, uh, school committee chat. There was a, uh, there was a consensus that, uh, it's gone, going well. There was a suggestion for the following year to maybe, uh, offer different times or different days as well, so we can get a broader audience. Uh, I would like to just, uh, share with the community, the community, uh, school committee chat will be this Saturday. The focus will be grades six through 12, but, uh, all people are invited. If you have any questions, please feel free to email me. Thank you.
Uh, CIA, Mr. Carden?
Uh, so we did meet with the, uh, Human Rights Commission representatives. Um, we went over, uh, with Sarah Bird and, and Dr. McNeil, the, um, the cultural, the cultural awareness, the cultural component of the panorama survey. That was very helpful for them. We, uh, went over the position description, which we approved tonight. And, uh, talked about a couple of other things, nothing, nothing important for the full committee. Thank you.
Uh, facilities, Mr. Fieldman?
I'll report.
Uh, policy, Mr. Schickman?
We brought forth our two policies.
Uh, high school building committee, Mr. Fieldman?
Dr. Bodie gave the report. We meet on April 6th.
Uh, liaison reports?
Uh, I, sorry.
Go ahead. Sorry, Mr. Carden.
Yeah, no, I'll just add, um, that from the AEF, that they, they were very excited over the program this weekend as well. And very thankful for Dr. McNeil for, for helping to organize it, put it together and bring, bring Arlington schools into, into this, um, partnership with the library. Thank you.
Uh, any other liaison reports? Uh, announcements? And future agenda items. Uh, Mr. Schickman?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as you're aware, the election is April 10th. And I anticipate your glowing reelection, uh, along with Mr. Fieldman. We look forward to that. Uh, unfortunately, due to the schedule, the first school committee meeting after the election isn't until April 29th, and that's also after the start of town meeting. So I would like to ask either tonight or to put on the agenda for next week to have the organizational meeting on Monday, April 12th at 7:00 PM.
Great. Just that piece though, I assume.
Yeah, just the organizational meeting. It's a 15 minute meeting. We go through, we elect the officers. We vote the committee.
I know what it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I'm saying that for the benefit of the rest of the world who's listening to this. It's just a, the, a structural 15 minute meeting.
Uh, Mr. Heiner?
Do we want to do the normist that night or do we want to do that the first meeting of the, uh, of the season?
Yeah, we do that with the nor, uh, with the, uh, with the, uh, organizational meeting. I think that's in the policy.
So. Sounds good.
Seven, it's 7:00 PM, right?
That's my proposal is the.
Right at seven, so I'll be, okay, I'll be there.
Talk about that next week. I think Mr. Speedo is talking to somebody else or no, oh, no, he's talking to us. Okay, sorry. Who else are you talking to at night?
Just wondering about, will you have, are you going to decide that on the, the next school committee meeting is what, April 8th?
Yeah.
And then you would have, wouldn't you have to post it by 7:00 PM on April 8th to have it on Monday night?
Yeah, so I, I can as current chair just say that we're going to have a meeting on April 12th at 7:00 PM.
Why don't we just vote it now and?
Oh, sorry, Ms. Ex, so Ms. Exton, can, can we make it 7:30?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, I move that we hold our organizational meeting on April 12th at 7:30 PM.
Second.
Great. Uh, discussion? Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Fieldman?
Yes.
Mr. Schickman?
Yes.
For Heiner?
Yes.
And I am also yes. Great. Okay, anything else? So that is no longer a future agenda item. We have dispensed with it tonight, which is great. Um, anything else for the next meeting? The two things that I had, um, and this is for Dr. McNeil, uh, sort of, and Ms. Elmer potentially was, um, the panorama student and staff results. We were looking for that for the full committee. I believe that was something that was coming up. Um, I don't know that it necessarily has to be on April 8th, but it's the, uh, mercifully, it's the last one that, uh, I need to do. And if we don't do it then, then we will pass that request on to Mr. Heiner. Is that something you think you could do on April 8th, Dr. McNeil, or would you rather a later in April meeting for that?
Uh, so it, what is, what is, I guess what is?
Well, we were looking, so I think there was a readout at, um, at CIAA, right? You guys looked at, at the, the, um, student and staff. But there was a request from there that it be done for the full committee as well.
Yes, so I, yes, I can, I can have it ready for April 8th.
So it would be sort of the condensed version, the 15 minute presentation version and then whatever questions you know, people had about it.
Sure.
Okay, sure. So that's, we're good for that for two weeks' time?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. And then, uh, the other thing that had been requested at one point by Ms. Exton, but I share the request is, um, beginning the conversation about what summer school and ESY would look like. We heard a little bit about that from Dr. Bodie tonight. Obviously, there's no expectation that on April 8th, there is any sort of fully flushed out plan. But it would be helpful to sort of start, um, you know, obviously it's something of, of significant interest, especially this summer. I think that I would add, uh, given Mr. Schickman's comments, um, I would say summer school, ELL and ESY, uh, as the, as, um, the, as the topic. And again, this would be, you know, sort of a brief, a brief presentation. Let us know where you're thinking is right now, what you're looking at. This was something that, um, I believe that, that Ms. Elmer did for us. Um, actually, I think she did an ESY retrospective at the end of the summer or middle of the summer last year. That was really helpful because she was sort of the first, but they were sort of the first ones that, um, were, you know, doing, doing some of this work with students last summer, which was, which was really helpful. So is that something, Ms. Elmer, that you think you could do for us in two weeks' time, like a very sort of preliminary?
Sure, um, I, I, I thought that it was a CIAA agenda item previously, but, um, sure, I, I think ESY, I just want to make sure that everyone is aware, is distinct from these other programs and it's an ongoing program. We run it every summer. It's only for eligible students. That's determined throughout the school year. So, you know, we don't have cutoff dates. We don't have invitations to join and whatnot. So, um, you know, it, it will be running pretty much as if it has run, um, in other summers with the addition of, uh, remote option as well, but sure, we can have a.
Well, maybe we should separate it. That would make it easier for the community to understand. If we just, if we did just ESY and then we had something else for, um, sort of generally summer programming for summer programming and ELL. Does that make sense? I'm super flexible because this is it.
Yeah, I, I, I'm cheering Dr. McNeil for the other parts of it. Um, as you mentioned, the committee has been meeting, um, for the last several weeks to talk about the other summer programming. Um, I've been a part of those meetings simply so we can talk about shared spaces, but, um, Dr. McNeil, I'm not sure if your team will be ready for April 8th, but.
April 8th? Sure.
I mean, it doesn't need to be like, we're not looking for anything. I'm not looking for anything sort of final, just sort of initial five or 10 minutes. This is what we've, we've, we've met. This is what we're talking about. These are the things we're concerned about. I don't know. Does that seem reasonable?
Is the new Friday rule in place?
Nope, I haven't voted the policy yet.
That's, that's a joke. I was trying to provide some levity. No, I can, I, I can definitely have a summary of what we're thinking about for the summer. Um, yes.
Um, great. Um, Ms. Ex, can I just, sorry, just to give some additional context to the ESY, um, piece of it.
Some of the feedback that, uh, we got at the school committee chat, um, was about families feeling frustrated, um, about communication. And so I just, I think if we can have a conversation in April, that the planning is happening and these are the steps that have to happen for it to take place. And, you know, there's, there's the hiring and there's transportation. And just so the community knows that, that it's being thought about and it's being planned, um, as we move forward. That was the ESY piece, um, from my perspective.
Great. All right, anything else? Great. Uh, I think that's it. Super. Motion to adjourn.
I was just gonna say, you're getting really good at this. Maybe you should stay for another year.
I'll move.
Second.
Um, Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Mr. Fieldman?
Yes.
Mr. Schickman?
Yes.
Mr. Heiner?
Yes.
And I am also yes. Great. Have a good night.
Be safe.
Good night all.